Evening and welcome to the December 3 meeting of the zoning board of appeals. In accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, this public meeting of the zoning board of appeals is physically closed to the public in order to avoid group congregation. There are alternative pressures in place for public access. They're being provided via FCTV as is customary. And as is customary these days, it's also available via Zoom. You can go to Zoom to provide public comment and more on that later at www.falmouthmass.us/zba. From there, there is a link to the Zoom app and ask you to provide a username and password and you can join us via Zoom that way if you wish. Introduce the board at this time. My name is TJ Hurry. I'm the chair of the board. We have Ken Foreman, who is the vice chairman. Ed Van Kuren, who was a full voting member, Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk, Scott Scott Zalinski, who is a full voting member, Mary Berry, who is an associate member, and James Morse, who is an associate member as well. Also with us tonight are Noreen Stockman, zoning administrator, Ashley DeMello, who is the recording secretary for the night. And members of the Falmouth IT department are assisting us on Zoom as well. Tom Cox, Adriana Pantano, and Justin Shanahan, and our friends at FCTV are helping stream this as well. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions that the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and from the public and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant and the public will be invited to comment as well. And more on that in a moment. The board will then either close or continue the hearing when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision. By motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, the board may continue the hearing to a future date in time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to either deny or prove would be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote such as a three to two vote would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. Turning to the agenda for the night, we have public comment period followed by one continuation, one, two, three, four, five new hearings and open meeting items. And you heard me say that I would address public comment in a moment. So here it is. Since we've taken up Zoom, we've been typically taking public comment via the webinar chat. After nine months of this, since we are in December now, it certainly presented its limitations both to the board and to the public itself. I've done some research and I'm sure anyone who's tuned in and watched us have heard us chat many nights about how to properly handle public comment. So I did some investigating. I looked on the attorney general's open meeting department for some guidance. They have been issuing some guidance from time to time. They also have a newsletter that they present. You can sign up for the email list and you get it monthly. And they've offered some guidance with regard to both open meeting and public comment. So we all know that we've been operating via Zoom since March and under the provisions of the emergency laws signed by Governor Baker, he has allowed us to participate with public hearings via Zoom. But again, the issue has been proper public participation and I think it's evident that this board thinks that the chat function just isn't doing enough. So I've looked at the attorney general's guidance and they've actually said that it is up to the chair's discretion to decide how and when public comments should be submitted. So I would propose modifying our rules that are usually in person. Anyone out there saw us in person prior to the pandemic knows that the chair would recognize someone during public comment, allow them up to the podium, state their name and address for the record, and then ask a question for up to two minutes or any question, comment, or concern regarding the project. So I am proposing a modified version of that. If anyone out there in the attendees list wishes to speak, they can press that function raising their hand and working with the IT department. We'll just see if there's any hands raised at all. We'll identify them. We will elevate them to the status that allows them to speak to provide any question, comment, or concern, and we'll go from there. So like I said, according to the AG's department, it was at the chair's discretion. But I think the board may be in support of that if we were to allow that. So how does the board think?
You made the motion?
I don't know if it needs to specifically be a motion, but I can certainly make that that we adopt that at this time.
I'll second it.
All right. So I made the motion. Scott seconded it. We'll do a roll call vote. And again, I'm not sure if this is binding or not, but we'll go ahead with it. Ed?
Dan Kuren, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, I.
James?
James Morris, I.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, I.
Harry?
Ray Barry, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So binding or not, the motion passes unanimously and that is how we will conduct the public comment.
Well done.
Very good. All right. So turning again to our agenda tonight, we do have public comment. This public comment is meant for anything that is not on the agenda tonight. So if anyone out there has any sort of public comment regarding something that is not on the agenda, you can go ahead, raise your hand. You can be elevated and speak to whatever is not on the agenda tonight. All right. Not seeing anyone out there at the moment. All right. Not seeing anything. So we will go ahead with the agenda. First, I will make a motion to take application 62-20 Locust Field LLC, 12569101214151618 and 19 Beach Plum Path Hatchville out of order. So would anyone like to?
Second.
All right. So I made the motion. Bob seconded it. Roll call vote with the regular voting members. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, I, knowing that I recuse myself from this case.
Very good. So it's just taking it out of the water. I don't think. Yep. Thank you, Scott. But we'll note that. Ken?
Ken Foreman, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So we are taking application 62-20 Locust Field LLC. Those addresses, Beach Plum Path Hatchville out of order. So we are actually not opening this application tonight. We're just going to state that the board's previous determination that was made on this application has been appealed to. Is it the committee or the commission? Noreen, formerly known as HAC, the Housing Appeals Committee.
It's the committee.
The committee. Okay. So that's the status of that application at this time. We're going to take no action on it. And when the time comes, I'll just make another announcement later on in the night. So again.
Mr. Jim, is it possible just to make a note with that that the that it was appealed prior to filing of the decision?
Sure, we can make that. All right. So once again, the board is not taking any action on that application and we don't expect it to be rescheduled at all. So it will drop off our agenda. The appeal process will play out and we'll see how it goes from there. All right. So having taken that out of order, we'll go to the top of the agenda. We have one continuation. It is application 56-20 Collin Voe, trustees, 20 Brooks Road in Woods Hole. And I believe attorney Moynihan is the representative on this project. Attorney, sorry, just a minute. The voting members on this are myself, Ken Foreman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Zalinski. Attorney Moynihan?
Good evening, everybody. I believe Brian Foley, the architect, may be in the audience waiting and Mr. Collin Voe as well. I think the only issue outstanding on this was Mr. McGann's determination or information that we didn't have an opportunity to clarify before the last hearing. I believe since the last hearing, Scott has indicated that the existing four-bedroom septic system is satisfactory for what is proposed at four Title V bedrooms in the house. There, you may recall, there was a question about whether there were actually five bedrooms proposed. So I see Scott is there and but my understanding from the email correspondence is that he agrees that it is only four bedrooms. And that was, that it should be suitable for what's being proposed on the floor plans.
Good. Mr. McGann, hi. I know you're a busy man these days. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, here, here, can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
And there lies the problem. If you guys have the, have the plans in front of you, sheet A102?
Yep.
You see the X next to the, next with the spiral staircases?
Yes.
Yes.
I read it quick and said, oh, they're getting rid of the spiral staircase. That room would be a bedroom. But with the spiral staircase there, I wouldn't define that as a bedroom because there's an access point to the upstairs that way. So that was probably where the difference is between my two referrals. Does that make sense to everybody?
Makes sense. And I think, I think that's where we were hung up on.
Yeah, I looked, I looked at it. I looked at it quick, you know, especially the last couple of weeks have not been easy, you know, with the contact tracing and stuff. So I, I just looked at that quick. I said, oh, they're getting rid of that. That definitely looks like a bedroom and it probably should have spent more time. And then it was also the last day. So it's not like we could have gone back and had a discussion. I think it was right, right high up against your meeting. So yeah, this four, if you look at, there's the spare bedroom, the bedroom, the three bedrooms up, there's doesn't look like any on the main floor, and then the basement has a bedroom. That's four. And based on my notes, it's got a four-bedroom septic, so.
Very good. So the, the room in question, you don't have any issue with it as it presently is now?
No, I mean, you're going to have it open to the downstairs. It's not going to be a practical bedroom. It's also going to be a way that you're going to access the upstairs. You know, you're not just going to use it for the office. So to me, that would not meet the definition of a bedroom. Although you guys have had a lot of ones that have been really tough lately, I have to say on some of your hearings. So so yeah, so I, that would be a mistake. I'll apologize to the applicant too, because that puts you guys off for a couple of weeks. But I looked at that real quick and I said, oh, it looks like they're getting rid of that. And if it was gone, then I would definitely would say that would be a bedroom.
All right. So thank you, Mr. McGann.
So sorry about that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
Can I ask you a question?
Scott Zalinski, I think you have a question.
As long as it's not, as long as it's not a COVID question. I don't do any COVID. 645.
Hi, Scott. How are you?
Good.
That septic, you have an accurate accounting of the age of it and what it is and accurate.
Yeah, I can do that if you want to just hold on one second because I'm on my computer here at work. So it'd take me two seconds to get the, all the, all the back in the day, Scott, when you used to do septic, we used to have to go in a back room to dig all this stuff out. But I've I've had everything scanned. So it makes life a lot easier. Just give it one second for it to boot up. It's a 1999, well, there's a tank put in in 99, so I'll have to go back to the way, a different database.
Because there was some question of how old it was and what condition it was.
I can tell you that. Yep. That's not going to be a problem as long as there's a decent plan on file. Yep, it's going to be a couple. Just let me. Is a permit from 86? And a permit from? Yeah, I mean, they're older septic systems. They're old leach pits.
All right. So they're not, they're not tied, they're not updated Title V septic.
They're not, they're not post 1995 systems.
Okay, so in the event that that, that system ever had to be updated, do you, in your opinion, do you feel like that there's enough surface area to be able to affect the Title V?
You mean, as far as enough lot space, do you guys, I'd have to look at the plot plan. The, the ones that Ashley had sent me were, did not contain a certified plot plan. Unless I'm missing something. What's the acreage? Well, it's in, it's I don't think.
This help at all? The, the prior decision back from 2003 had a comment from the health agent at that time and it said that they performed some rough calculations on the plan. And they had estimates of the area available to be about 850 square feet.
Well, based on a perk rate, remind me exactly what's the nearest street to Brooks Road is that I would remember? What's the main road, closest main road? Is it Woods Hole?
Yeah.
Well, the perk rate, the perk rate in Woods Hole, it all depends. Usually we do deep strip outs and find the decent material down as opposed to making the systems, you know, large. 850 square feet would probably be fine in order to fit a septic system because you'll need about 600 square feet. And you could, you know, so you're kind of pushing it. But yeah, you'd probably be able to, I mean, would, again, it's, if we're not considering this an up, we're not considering this an increase in flow. So if we had to grant variances, we, it's an assessed four-bedroom house. So we would make it fit. We're still putting septic systems in the heights, believe it or not, right? We didn't sewer all of the heights and we're wrapping septic systems around the house a foot and a half off a foundation and a property line. This one won't be that bad. So we'd, you know, we'll have to make it work. Now, an increase in flow would be a totally different ballgame. An increase in flow would be an increase in the number of bedrooms. But since it's assessed for four and the septic system is old, you know, we just let sleeping dogs lie and then we don't really get into, you know, what the design flow was back in the early eighties because the records just weren't that great. So we'd recognize this as a four-bedroom. They'd come to me, that'd be a simple repair if they needed variances. That would be.
Okay, I just wanted to get your opinion on it. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. Any other follow-up questions from the board? All right. Not seeing any.
Motion to close?
Well, I'll just have to make the announcement, public comment, or Scott McGann, if you had any.
No, if I'm okay to go, can I go now?
Yes.
Let the poor guy go.
It was an unexpected appearance. Thank you, Mr. McGann.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right. Here's the inaugural public comment. If anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project, go ahead and raise your hand using the Zoom feature. And we can elevate you and you can provide any question, comment, or concern you may have. All right. Not seeing any. Would anyone like to make a motion then?
So I will, I will make a motion.
Motion to close? All right. Motion to close made by Ken. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob? Roll call vote. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, I.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski.
And TJ Hurry, I. So the hearing is closed. Would the board like to proceed?
A motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
All right. Motion approved with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Scott. Like to start us off with findings?
Yes, a 240-3, 240-69E, 240-216, not substantially more detrimental. They're not conforming to lot coverage. Existing is 23.98, proposed is 24.89, which is just under the 25% allowed by special permit. They're going to be removing the existing decks to construct a screen porch and a rinse station on the lower level. And the screen porch will also have a cantilever deck. The shed is to be removed. Property is not served by town sewer. Health agent, we reviewed the plans on November 20th and concluded the house is a four-bedroom home. So it'll be remaining a four-bedroom home. We need to also put a finding in from the engineering comments, number five, that the plan showed that there are portions of the existing stone retaining walls located within the public right-of-way of Clapham Road. And they would have to defer to the planning board and select board if a license is required for occupation of the town right-of-way by these structures or if these structures should be removed from the right-of-way. There were some questions originally about drywells, but they are shown on the plan.
Anything else for findings?
I think that's it for me.
All right. Any other findings from anyone at all? All right. Conditions?
So house is to remain a four-bedroom. The home's new shed roof areas to be connected to drywells. I like the condition as built just regarding to lot coverage because it's so close to the 25%. I think we should add the condition again on the engineering number five that applicant needs to defer to the planning board and select board if a license is required for the retaining walls located in the public right-of-way. Or if they get a license for them or if they should be removed. And then all the rest of the normal engineering comments, you know, no stormwater runoff to public property or butters of rights of way. And no alterations will be proposed in the right-of-way itself. If they are, then they have to get a permit from the engineering division.
All right. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask about timing on the license issue? I mean, could that be determination made prior to final building permit sign-off? Because that might take some time.
Yeah, I, I'd be fine with that because it's just the walls anyways. It's not part of the actual construction.
All right. Thank you.
So we can amend that.
All right. Any other last call for any findings or conditions? All right. The motion to approve the project with conditions was made by Bob and seconded by Scott to roll call vote. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Yeah?
Ken Foreman, I.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski.
And TJ Hurry, I. So the project passes unanimously with conditions. Attorney Moynihan, thank you to you and your team.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, up next, we have, moving on to our new hearings, moving on to application 58-20 Privet Trustees, 149 Allen Avenue in Falmouth.
So application number 59-20, being all persons deemed affected by the board of appeals under section 11 of chapter 48 of the Mass General Laws. You hereby notify that James M. Kelly of East Falmouth, Mass has applied to the zoning board of appeals for modification of special permit 50-19 pursuant to sections 240-23G1 of the Code of Falmouth to allow living space above the garage on subject property known as 165 Acapescot Road, East Falmouth, Mass.
Bob, you're on mute.
I think Bob has the.
I've got the, I've got the wrong file. Let me go.
Yes.
I was on mute myself. Whoops.
I mixed up Acapescot with Allen. Hold on. All right, second try. Application number 58-20, being all persons deemed affected by the board of appeals under section 11 of chapter 48 of the Mass General Laws, you hereby notify that Paul E. and Michelle M. Privet, trustees of Franklin, Mass, have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-3C of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the attached garage, creating additional living space within the garage on subject property known as 149 Allen Avenue, Falmouth, Mass. There is a note here from Scott McGann Health Department. The project shows a loss of an existing bedroom. One bedroom is being converted to an office. The bedroom credit is now being used above the garage. The other proposed living and reading area rooms are not considered bedrooms as they are only way to pass through to the newly created bedroom. And if the ZBA determines this to be an accessory apartment, this property is not in a coastal pond overlay district. It would not be required to have an enhanced nitrogen removal septic system. From engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Allen Avenue was a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters of public rights of way. We request the board to include a condition that the new roof be connected to the relocated drywell. And five, where this project will not require a street opening or driveway permit from engineering, we recommend the erosion and sediment controls are included for this project to protect the town right-of-way and downstream stormwater system under the NPDES permit. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. The construction of this project shall follow the attached soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions document referring to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with zoning board of appeals who is the permitting authority. Conservation Commission voted to approve the reference project under a request for determination of applicability. The signed permit is not yet available, but this project is located within flood zone only and does not require mitigation from the commission. And there is already an existing dry road which is proposed to be relocated to hit setbacks. Any board no comment. Fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. Water department, no comment. Assessors department, this includes lot 19 and parcel 3A. And no letters.
Okay. Okay. And the regular voting members are the voting members on this project, and we have attorney Clara for the applicant tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen and Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth. And I represent Paul, Michelle Privet, the owners of one forty-nine Allen Avenue and the applicants on this matter tonight. The privates are seeking permission to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling at the property. It's located at one forty-nine Allen Avenue, which is part of the Belvedere Plains neighborhood. It's just north of Clinton Avenue. It's a lovely, well-established wet residential neighborhood with smaller lots. This lot has fourteen thousand four hundred and forty-four square feet. And it's located in the residential C zoning district. The existing structure is a one-story, four-bedroom home with an attached garage. I'll note, the assessor's card shows it as a three-bedroom, but there was a septic upgrade in twenty nineteen to make it a four-bedroom system. The existing ridge height is sixteen feet, eight inches. The lot, existing lot coverage by structure is seventeen point four percent. And it's non-conforming with regards to the side yard setback, which is six and a half, I think it's six and a half feet where ten is required. It's otherwise conforming to setbacks and lot coverage requirements. The privates have owned this property for a few years and have been making upgrades throughout that time. But they found that additional living space would significantly improve their use and enjoyment of the property. They have adult children who visit with children of their own. And as such, they're seeking to add some additional living space both behind and above the garage. This will allow for better use of the existing space in the main part of the dwelling and overall improvement to the property. Specifically, they're seeking the, for the existing garage to be torn down and shifted towards the front of the house. The area behind the garage will be expanded to allow some additional living and recreation space. There is a small kitchenette, which is intended largely as a wet bar for the patio, which is a large, really large, beautiful patio that's out back. Function is sort of an indoor-outdoor space. There's no stove or cooking facilities in the proposed area. Above the garage will be a small den and bedroom. As was noted in Mr. McGann's referral, the total number of bedrooms will remain at four as a bedroom in the main area of the house will be eliminated with a four-foot case opening and converted into an office. The ridge height of the addition is twenty feet, seven inches, which is just a little bit higher than the existing ridge height, but well below thirty-five percent, or thirty-five feet that's allowed by right. The non-conforming setback will remain. It's slightly improved. I hesitate to say it's improved. It's only three and a half inches, and I don't want to bring the scorn of the board for calling it an improvement. But it is a slight improvement nonetheless. The lot coverage by structure will increase slightly. It's nineteen point eight percent, which is still under the twenty percent that's allowed by right. Due to the existing side yard, non-conforming setback, this does require a set, a special permit under section two forty-three C of the bylaw. That section provides that pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of two forty, two sixteen, and whether or not that alteration creates a new dimensional non-conformity, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. Here, this project needs to stand at two forty-three C. The existing setback will remain virtually unchanged. Although slightly improved, there's no new non-conformity that will be created. There's no impacted views and vistas, and the dwelling is consistent with other homes in the neighborhood. There's no detriments to this project relative to the existing structure, and really, there's no detriment at all. And it meets the standards of two forty dash two sixteen. Based on this information, I would ask this board grant a special permit. And I'd be glad to address any questions that you or the public may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Clara. We'll turn it to board questions. Ed, any questions?
No questions at this time.
All right, thank you, Ed. Bob, anything?
So Kevin, where is the drywall being relocated to? It doesn't show on the plan.
You're correct, it doesn't show in the plans. It says existing drywall to be relocated, so they're going to move it, I suppose, further back from the house. Provide and provide that it's at least twenty-five feet from the septic system.
And what about the rinse station and the generator?
The rinse station is coming out. The, I don't know if they have plans to relocate their, the generator.
And is it, am I correct that the back of the garage is actually wider than the front of the garage?
It is because the front of the garage runs into the existing side of the house.
So it almost looks like the back of garage does the same thing, is that?
The back of the garage is, they're showing it at twenty-one feet, two inches. The front of the house is twenty feet, eight inches. I suppose that's the difference and sort of effectively the trim that's going to be there as opposed to running into the wall.
And some of the some of the dimensions just seem to be off a little bit between the plans and the I mean, there are inches here and there, but where you're saying the, so where you're saying it's six and a half feet setback, what is that? What is the dimension there of the width of the garage? You're saying that's so on the plans, like, like on one plan, it says twenty feet, nine inches. On one plan, it says twenty feet, eight inches. On one plan, it says you know, twenty-one, two, twenty-one, two, and change. They just, they just, they don't seem to be consistent. So I just want to make sure that the dimensions run the same way all the way through. And I guess my only concern, and I'm sure you can understand it, is that it seems the only entrance into this is from the backyard.
No, there's an entrance from the backyard or from the garage.
Or in, inside the garage, but no, no actual entrance in from the house itself, correct?
No, you'd have to go through the garage to the to the new area or from the outside.
So the, so the, so the appearance that it gives, I know you said that they'd like to have the kitchenette for backyard for entertaining, but the appearance that it seems to give is that this is almost set up like a separate apartment unit, where you've got a living area, kitchenette downstairs, a bedroom on the second floor with the bath, and then another sitting room.
I mean, I, I understand the concern, but that's not what they're doing. They're not creating a separate living area because they're not putting in a separate cooking facility. It's, and there's no prohibition on having a wet bar. I think, given the design of the house and given the patio back there, that makes the most sense for a place, an area to add space.
So if we put a covenant on this, limiting it to a single-family home so that it isn't a sec, it isn't a separate livable unit, would they be
I'm sorry, I missed the question, Mr. Dan.
So would they be amenable to a covenant that would limit this to a single-family home?
I believe they would, as long as it's worded that until such time as they obtain any necessary permits. So it wouldn't prohibit them from doing so further if they wanted to.
So does this, does this, if they decided to do it now and apply as an apartment, would this meet the current accessory apartment bylaw?
I don't know, because they're not applying for it as an accessory apartment. So I didn't, I didn't look at it from that analysis.
Because it's, it appears to be too large if they went that way.
Sure, but they're not, but they're not looking to do that. They're not looking to create a separate accessory apartment. So I'd be happy, you know, I, I spoke with them about that possibility, and they said, if necessary, that agree to a deed restriction. But I always want, I always like to leave them open-ended so that if they did want to seek appropriate permits later, or if the bylaw changed at some point, it wouldn't prohibit them from doing something that would otherwise be allowed.
Right, so I guess just my final question on that. So if, if there was a restriction and the bylaw did change, wouldn't they automatically be allowed to apply for modification of the deed restriction?
They, it, it, it wouldn't necessarily be a modification of the deed restriction. They'd need to apply for a special permit. And the deed restriction would simply say that it's only a single-family house until, and if and until they ever obtain permits, the appropriate permits for something else.
All right, that's all the questions I have right now.
Thank you, Bob. James, any questions?
No questions.
Ken? Oh, you're on mute, Ken.
Oh, just took me a second to find my mic. Yeah, not, not so much a question, just a comment. In addition to casing the opening for the, what was a bedroom, be four feet wide, they're also moving the doors for the closet so that the access is from the hallway. Is that correct?
Yes, that does appear correct. I hadn't actually noted that before, but
Thanks.
Thank you, Ken. Mary, anything? Thank you, Mary. Scott?
Yeah, just, just to backtrack a little bit, because it was unclear to me. When you were making your presentation, there was a comment, and I, and you went so fast, I couldn't stay with it. Something about a new se, a new septic in nineteen. And you had mentioned something about a three-bedroom. It was a three-bedroom septic, but there was four bedrooms in this house then?
It, it appears that way. There was, in twenty nineteen, there was a septic upgrade, which allowed for an additional bedroom.
So they added a bedroom after the upgrade, or the upgrade was triggered by the fourth bedroom being?
I'm not sure. They bought this property in twenty eighteen. And I'm, I'm not, you know, I don't believe they've added a bedroom since that time.
So just help me clarify this in my own mind. So as far as you know, there was a three-bedroom septic system and four bedrooms in the house.
Yes.
When they bought it.
As far as I'm aware, yes.
They upgraded the septic to a four-bedroom. Okay. I, I just, when, when you, when you read through it, it just three-bedroom stuck in my mind, and I looked at the pre-existing plans and the future plans, because it says you're gutting. It says demo on the first floor. Would you be a little more specific about what's being demoed?
Sure. Let me, let me get up to the demo plan. What's being demoed is, is actually what's, what's hashed. So if I may, I'll share my screen for a moment. Bear with me, because this is always an adventure. Share screen. So if you look at the demo plan, what's being demoed is the garage area, which is all hashed, as well as just the, the closet and the door.
That's it. And, okay. And, 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 and piggybacking off Bob's question, this is his answer, Larry. The reason you didn't go for an accessory apartment is because the square footage proposed is too big. Is that the only reason you didn't go?
No, I don't think they want an accessory apartment. They just want an additional living space.
But they want to leave it open for future opportunities?
That, that's my, that's my suggestion. That's not, say anything never requested. I always look to, to leave that as a, in a part of a deed restriction as to not prohibit somebody from doing something that might otherwise be allowed. But they're willing to say they're, they're, they're not doing it. It's going to be a single-family house. But if, depending on what might come in the future, they could theoretically apply for the permits to do that.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Attorney Cloud. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Scott? Attorney Clower, on the second floor of the proposed garage, that bathroom that's being proposed. I'm a little thrown off there with the description and then recess cubbies. Is that a full bath, or is that just a half-bath proposed?
The recess cubbies are where you put shampoo or soap behind the bathtub there.
So is that, is that oval there? Is that an actual tub, a full tub being proposed? It is. Okay.
It appears that way, yeah.
Okay. So you would have the full bath on the second floor, and then you would have the half-bath proposed off of the kitchenette on the first floor?
Your powder room off the kitchenette, yep.
Right, okay.
And again, that's kind of intended to be indoor-outdoor use with the patio.
Understood. Okay. Any other follow-up questions from the board?
Just a quick question, Attorney Cloud. If you could put that screen on that bedroom that you're opening up.
You want to see the demo plan or the?
I guess just the demo where you're moving the closet and the doorway. So is that, so is that little middle section staying?
Yes, because the closet's still going to be there. It's just going to be access from the hallway.
So if you Okay, so, so they're, so they're wall, they're walling off the, okay, they're walling off the inside. They're just reversing the closet.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And just to confirm again, they are not going to be relocating the rent station?
I, I'm not aware that they plan to. It's, it's not shown on the plan.
All right, any follow-up questions from the board? All right, seeing none, we'll turn it to public comment. If anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project. Using the Zoom app, go ahead and click the raise hand button. And if anyone does that, we'll just identify you, we'll raise you up to elevate you, I guess the term is, and you can ask whatever question, comment, or concern you may have. All right, here's the first one. We do have someone. If we could please elevate Paul Privet. And Paul, once you're elevated, if you can just, again, provide your name and address for the record and give any question, comment, or concern you do have, we typically limit typically limit people to two minutes.
Yes, I'm the owner of one forty-nine Allen. That rent station is just being moved back. The amount of the, the area that it is now, it's staying right where it is, but moving back ten feet along with the generator. And then the drywall will be just moved back itself, just to clarify.
Thank you, Mr. Privet. Any questions for Mr. Privet? All right. Thank you, Mr. Privet. And again, if anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand on the Zoom app, and we can get to you shortly. All right, not seeing anyone for public comment. Any follow-up questions from the board?
They'd make a motion to close.
We have a discussion first. So the only reason I wouldn't want to close, we seem like we're getting a lot of these projects starting to come back. They have these spaces set up that even though they don't have a stove, they're pretty much set up as apartments that wouldn't meet the current accessory apartment bylaw. I would like to have a covenant on these projects so that these are considered a single-family property. Again, until times change, if the, if the bylaw changes, but I would like to get wording from town council on exactly how we should condition that. We're just seeing this a lot. I also think that because the we now have testimony, the rinse station is remaining. I don't have much of a problem with that, but I think all those items need to appear on the plan. And all the measurements that appear in the plan have to be consistent. So I would actually ask that we continue the hearing for those items. And then at that point, draft the decision that would include the covenant. And we would also have a plan at that point that is, that is detailed. Building Department used to do covenants like this. They don't do them much anymore. We've seen a couple of projects in the past. We're seeing another one tonight later on. They all seem to have the same similar setups. They actually show kitchenettes. They show fridges, they show other areas, and you know, you love to take the property owners on their word, and I'm sure if that's what they want to use it for, they will, but properties easily get transferred at some point. It's very easy for these spaces to be changed without any kind of notification. But if there's some kind of a some kind of a recorded covenant at the registry of deeds, it's very easily to be aware of it. Everyone in a transfer is aware of it. And if they need to change something at that time, they can change something. So my recommendation would be not to close this evening, to continue to the next hearing, at which point we would get wording for the covenant. And we would always also have a revision of the plan showing that the rinse station is remaining, where the drywall is being relocated to, and having the measurements so that they meet consistency on all the plans.
What was the, I, I thought I heard you say that the health department said that they they would be meet the requirements for accessory apartment.
No, what, so, so what the health department said, and I'll read it, it came at the end of the referral. So health department looked at this project just for the matter of bedrooms, and it does meet the matter of bedrooms for the septic system. So health department looked at this project just for the matter of bedrooms and it does meet the matter of bedrooms for the septic system. But they added a second comment. Um, because I think the way they looked at it is it appeared it would be easily to be used as an apartment. So they just wanted to let us know that if the ZBA determines this to be an accessory apartment, the property is not in a coastal pond overlay district. It would not be required to have an enhanced nitrogen system for the septic.
So why do you think this is, you know, I'm trying to?
So if you look at.
Under the accessory apartment by law. Uh, what? Is it too big?
It's too big. It doesn't meet, it doesn't meet the square footage. Um.
What was the limitation? I thought forty?
It's an eight hundred square foot limitation, but but we're not looking to have it approved as an accessory apartment and I think that's getting getting lost. Um. I think that um. To to Mr. Dugan's point, uh, I, we have a deed restriction that's been approved by town council in the past. Um, I I used it recently with town council. Um, with language exactly to this effect, saying that this is, you know, the following property is a single family residence. Uh, and shall only be a single family residence until such time as the homeowners, you know, obtain the appropriate permits for. I'm blanking on the exact wording, but I I have it, I've had it approved by town council. Um, a number of times fairly recently. Um, so I'm, and the homeowners are happy to do that. Happy might not be the right word, but they're willing to do that. Uh, they 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 expressed that to me earlier. And uh. Other than that, I think the the.
So so I'm, I'm just, you know, in terms of discussion, Bob.
Yep.
You know, if if we make a a condition that requires such a, the implementation of such a you know, covenant or uh, limitation suitable for, uh, you know, that meets um, the standards of town council. Uh, I I just feel like, you know, every time we continue one of these, not only is it uh. You know, obviously, uh, making the life of the applicant more difficult, but it's making our life more difficult. We have a huge backlog of forty Bs to deal with and.
So I, so so I asked the administrator in advance today to touch base with town council and see.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw that.
And and it seems like they needed more time to figure out what would actually be the required uh. Writing of the covenant and they wanted to make sure it also was listed, it would be reported at the registry before the permit is exercised. There was some other wording that they needed. And because I don't have any of that right now and they haven't submitted it. Because they wanted us to, you know, even said Noreen to also check with the building department and town council to come up with something. I just don't have something to just say, we will write a covenant. And once we close the hearing and say what the restriction is. Realistically, you are extremely limited of what it's going to say. So I understand the situation with timing and I think it would be quick enough, just like we had on on Brooks Road, just like we had on Prospect Street. Um. You know, once we actually have a covenant that they've given to us that would meet, it would meet on all these projects. It would be easy enough to say, let's put in the standard covenant, but we don't have one right now. And we're seeing multiples of projects like this come in. And even though I know it's not their intention at this time, and I believe it's not the owner's intention. Um, it's, it's, it's happening frequently and it's, it's causing a problem. So I'd rather, I'd rather handle it now and have a covenant written now that goes in and it's corrected. You know. The plans say they're not doing anything rent station. I know it's a minor thing, but but now we know they are relocating it. Doesn't show on the plans. The dry well just says will be relocated, doesn't show on the plans. Um, quite honestly, those are, those are situations, if they were relocating it, they should have already put it on the plans. There's no reason they can't show where something's been relocated to. We get them all the time. It says it's going from point A to point B. So I understand the timing constraints. I just think in this situation, we don't have the wording that we need from town council and we need to actually have the wording to put in the condition if we close it tonight. I have no problem with closing the hearing based on getting wording to put into the decision from town council. But you're still going to need another hearing to do that.
And and you've already heard testimony that they want to leave their options open for the future. So if you don't define what it is we're talking about now. I- i- if if they would have agreed to restrict that to what it is and not leave their options open for the future, it would be a lot easier to do that without this additional information, right?
I I can read the exact language if you'd like, and this is language the town council has approved in the past. And I think it could be conditioned that that a covenant be signed and recorded prior to uh. You know, obtaining a building permit, that that I think is simple enough, but the the exact language, bear with me.
Kevin, not to, not to, not to interrupt, and I know you probably have the language before, but from what we're getting tonight, that language may change.
Sure, I understand.
Well, let's hear, let's hear what he has to say.
So what we've used in the past is the dwelling located at one forty nine Allen Avenue, Falmouth, Massachusetts. She'll be limited to a single family residence. And the living area above the garage will not be rented as a separate apartment until such time as the owner obtained appropriate permits from the town of Falmouth. And that is language that they have approved in the past. Now, I understand it could change, but I think we could have a condition that there be a covenant approved by town council uh, recorded.
When was that? When was that language dated?
Uh, I used that language uh, this past spring. But for the address.
For this address?
But no, but for the address. I use that exact language on a different address. And that was, that was approved, that covenant was approved uh, by town council and recorded.
All right, um, I do see a late hand that got raised. Um. If we could elevate Cheryl and see her comment. Uh, Cheryl, if you, if you could just state your full name and address for the record and any question, comment, or concern you may have with the project.
Cheryl, you want me, do you want me to say something?
Sure, you had your hand raised, so I didn't know if you wanted to provide any.
I have something I want. No, I didn't. I I meant unmute.
Okay, so no, no, nothing for this application, Cheryl?
I guess not.
Okay, not to worry. We'll uh, we'll put you back in the attendees list. Thank you. All right.
So again, Chairman, I I think my only issue is there has been a connection with town council tonight. They do not have the wording. They think we're going to need wording. Um, very specific and they want it to be used on other projects if we need it. We have another project coming up tonight and I'm going to make the same suggestion on the other project up tonight because it's the exact same scenario. And I understand it's one meeting. But I also have an issue with these plans that are coming in that don't have on the plans what is being proposed and what we see a plan, if something's being removed, that should show up being removed, that someone's being relocated, should show where it's being relocated. It's the only way we know where they're going to put anything. Without that, we don't, we don't have anything. There are dimension inconsistencies. They need to be done now so that there aren't issues with the building department and the plans that we have. We've seen that also in other projects in the past. And quite frankly, as far as the, I'm I'm thrilled they're fine with a um, with a covenant. But anybody designing this project, it shows the size kitchenette they have with a fridge and opening a first floor and a stairway to a second floor and that that end doesn't go directly into a house. You end up entering it from inside a garage or from an exterior is going to know that the first question that's going to come out is somebody can convert this to an apartment. It it. It's just reasonable the way the layout is. And I still think that that, you know. I don't mind closing the hearing to draft the decision. It includes a restrictive covenant. And also receipt of the correct plans that show the changes, but I think moving, you know, moving forward without that, I just think is a mistake.
Okay, I I like that idea. Bob, I mean, because I just want to not, you know. Have a long discussion. I think this is a fairly straightforward project. Once we get that covenant, you know, you raise a good point.
I I think it'll be just like Prospect Street.
Decision with appropriate wording. Uh, including the covenant in there. Uh, you know, it's, it'll be a simple matter to take it up and vote it without a lot of.
It it would be quick at that point.
Right, so why don't I?
I'll make that motion.
May I, may I just ask a quick question? Noreen, would you prefer that I send you the draft covenant um, that you can give to town council for review?
Um, I think that's fine. Do you think you can get those planned tweaks for December tenth?
I I think so. I'm, I'm a bit confused though, because I I don't, and I apologize, I'm not trying, I hope I'm not coming off as dense. I I'm not quite seeing the discrepancies because I'm looking at the site plan and I'm looking at the building plan, the site plan, we've got twenty one, two. And and I think, you know, the building plans is twenty one, two, two and a quarter. Is that, that, that what you're talking about?
Yeah, just the basics, Kevin, even when they're minor like that, because you're, you're dealing with the sideline that's already at. You know, your nonconformity and, you know. We've seen this on a couple of other plans I was reviewing, Dave, for other projects. And it's, it's appearing on a lot of them and it might just be people working on a lot of plans. But, you know, small, small mistakes like that turn into bigger mistakes. And then a lot of times, you don't see the plans when they're coming back from the building department. So they can just, so, so when they're adding the rent station and the other stuff, just have them review the plan and just make sure that all the measurements are consistent.
I I suspect it's just the the engineer using the the round number versus the the fractional interest.
So if he wants to use the round number of both, whatever he wants to do, but just make sure that the plans match.
Okay.
Right, but you also want to have the actual location of the dry well versus that it will be relocated. Because the other problem we have is that if the location's not on the plan, we don't have any way to require that it be constructed. And I think, you know, where for the rent station's going to be and if you know where the generator's going to be, just seems to make best sense to just pop those on the plan.
Okay.
So do you think you'd be able to have that updated for December tenth? Is that too quick?
Uh, I, yeah, I think so. I I won't be able to get it to you a week in advance.
You know, that's, I, I, I think is if you can just get us that plan um, for the tenth, I think we'd be fine.
Yep, that's fine. And I'll, and I'll send over that draft covenant tonight.
Okay.
You're good. All right. Would anyone like to make the motion then?
I do.
I'll second it.
All right, so uh, motion to continue the hearing to December twelfth made by Scott, seconded by Ken.
Uh, December, December tenth.
I'm sorry, December tenth?
Yeah, I think we're asking for a draft motion too, right?
Yeah, so the motion would be to draft a positive decision, which includes a covenant. And receipt of the updated plans showing the location of the dry well, the rent station. And consistent measurements on both plans. Which can be voted at the meeting of December tenth.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's the motion I made.
Good motion, Scott.
That's the one.
Scott, exactly.
Good, good one. All right.
Thanks, Bob.
So that uh, that motion was made by Scott with assistance from Bob, seconded by Ken. Uh, roll call vote, Ed?
Hey, Dave, you're an I.
Bob?
I'm a Q and I.
Ken?
And Forman, I.
Scott?
Scott, Slinski, I.
And TJ Hury, I. All right. Tony Cloud, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your time.
All right, moving right along, we have application fifty nine dash twenty Kelly, one sixty five Acapescot Road in East Falmouth.
So application fifty nine dash twenty, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty eight of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that James M. Kelly of East Falmouth, Mass, has applied to the zoning board of appeals for modification of special permit fifty dash nineteen pursuant to sections two forty dash twenty three G one of the Code of Falmouth to allow living space above the garage on subject property known as one sixty five Acapescot Road, East Falmouth. Uh, from engineering, the applicant has complied with their approval of condition three, B and C. Uh, they have a driveway permit twenty nineteen dash twenty five has been completed and request to return the bond has been made. Originally, the driveway uh, was gravel and they've changed that to asphalt. Uh, from health. The four foot uh, case opening in one bedroom as depicted does eliminate privacy and therefore it is being defined as a bedroom. Then therefore it being defined as a bedroom. He would allow the room over the garage to be constructed as it would not be the third bedroom. And this is in reference to the second floor plan. Um, where they took one of the bedrooms and they opened up a four foot case opening. Uh, from engineering, again, they have an open driveway permit twenty nineteen dash one twenty five. For this parcel in condition number three C of the approved special permit requires completion of the driveway permit. We defer to the zoning board. This should be cleared up prior to approval of modification to the original permit. Um, they have no further comments. Uh, the project does not include any additional site work. Planning department has no comments. Conservation has no comment. The proposed project appears outside of conservation jurisdiction. Water department has no comments. I'm gonna um. Read this comment from health. I don't, I don't know if it's been updated or not, but uh, they have an existing three bedroom home. The proposed space above the garage meets the definition of a bedroom in both title five NFHR fifteen, the local title five regs. The existing septic is a pre nineteen ninety five title five system. And must be upgraded for the purposes of finishing the room above the garage. The presented site plan does show a proposed septic system but lacks detail on capacity. Should be designed for a minimum of four within a properly sized reserve area. Additionally, the proposed second floor space looks real close to an accessory or in-law apartment. If the ZBA determines this is an accessory apartment, please note the property is located in a coastal pond overlay district. Property seeking an accessory apartment where an increase in flow was proposed. The bylaw requires an innovative alternative denitrifying septic system to be installed. And then we have a letter. Uh, DSBA members, I am in a butter to one sixty five Acapescot Road, East Falmouth. And object to the proposed plan to allow living space above the garage. Neither a leaching field nor title five septic system has been installed to accommodate the increased living space. As in a butter, I feel this is detrimental to the neighborhood as well as the environment. And that's signed respectfully Kathleen M. Hurdle at four Lieutenant Stafford Road, which appears to be the butter directly behind. Um, there was also a question regarding there was a removal of a landing and stairs that were part of the prior permit and those landing and stairs have not been removed. And that's all that I have.
All right, thank you, Bob. And for the applicant tonight, I believe we have the applicant himself, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, hello, my name is, my name is James Kelly. Can you hear me all right?
We're having a little bit of feedback, but we can hear you, at least on my end.
Let me see if I can resolve that. Okay, can the board hear me now?
Still a little bit of an echo and feedback there.
Yeah, I'm having technical difficulties here. I had to, I had to put you on my.
Still having trouble. Mr. Kelly, are you using a cell phone or are you using a laptop or?
I have a problem with my laptop. So are are you able to hear me all right?
Hi, Jim, this is Tom with IT. If you have the meeting on two devices, you're going to want to mute the other one. That's what's creating the feedback. Hi Jim, this is Tom with IT. If you have the meeting on two devices, you're going to want to mute the other one. That's what's creating the feedback.
Looks like he froze. And, uh, there's a Jim raising his hand in the chat. I'm guessing that might be his cell phone or his laptop. Mr. Kelly, can you hear us?
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Kelly, we can see you now. And we lost him. We can see you. Uh, can't hear you at the moment. This is weird. So, Mr. Kelly, it looks like we have you on two devices right now. If you could just try one device.
Like the Matrix. I think he's trying to use phone for voice.
He's muted.
Hey Jim, if you're trying to use two devices, you can't do two devices in the same meeting. That's what's going to create the feedback that we were hearing earlier. You're going to have to be on one device or the other.
Did we lose him entirely? Looks like we might have.
Hello, are you able to hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay.
Here we go.
I'm sorry, I've been having terrible difficulties with this tonight.
No worries. It's, it's been a process to, to, to learn for all of us.
Okay, uh, where would you like me to start?
Uh, wherever you'd like.
Okay, um, uh, I'm seeking a modification of special permit zero five zero dash one nine to build out the living space over the permitted garage, which has been completed, uh, the garage that has been completed. Um, the, uh, the proposed living space would be additional living space. Uh, I did hear comments earlier about, uh, accessory apartments. This is too big, uh, for that. This is about a thousand fifty square feet, so it does not comply with that, nor is it, uh, proposed for that. Uh, this is additional living space, uh, to give us, uh, more of a one-floor living arrangement. And also, uh, for, uh, my visiting, uh, daughter and grandchildren during the summertime. Uh, so that we have, uh, we have, uh, a space to, uh, uh, for, for them to, uh, to be in. Um, I've had a conversation with Scott McGann about, uh, the septic system. This is, uh, it's a three, um, a three-bedroom septic system. He has given me the option of deconstructing the small bedroom in our house uh, by putting in a, uh, a four-foot cased opening, uh, allowing me to, uh, potentially build out the larger bedroom, uh, in the proposed living space. Uh, as far as the, um, comment on the driveway, uh, Scott Schluter was out today and signed off on the driveway. He forwarded that note to Ashley DeMello. Uh, so I would think that would be in the board's possession. Uh, I was, I was CC'd on that same note. So that, uh, that has been completed. Uh, he was, um, yeah, I, you know, we had put a storm drain, a six-hundred gallon storm drain in the, uh, in the driveway to catch any runoff. So that, uh, there's no water that would spill into the street. And as a matter of fact, I'm lower than the street level anyway, so, uh, that, that would be of no issue, uh, at all. I, I think that's about all I have. I mean, again, this was a, uh, this is a proposed, um, modification of a already constructed, uh, building. I was allowed per last visit on October seventeenth of twenty nineteen to build a structure and to frame in the living space and to stub it in with utilities. Uh, and that's where it sits right now today. And I'm, uh, open to any questions you might have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Uh, we'll turn it to board questions and we'll go from there. Uh, Ed, any questions?
Yeah, I only have one question. We should ask the building commissioner if that needs a second exit for the second floor of, of the garage.
Well, um, it's, it's open to, it's open to the house, um, by, via a four-foot, uh, cased opening. So, uh, when this was, um, inspected, uh, by Rod Palmer, uh, he didn't, uh, have any issues with that. The board, when I first, um, appeared before you on October seventeenth of nineteen, uh, the plans haven't changed since then. Um, that didn't seem to be a consideration. There isn't a, uh, there is an egress, uh, at the breezeway and there is an egress, uh, there's several egresses through the house.
Any other questions, Ed?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, James, anything? All right, Ken?
Well, I, I have to say, so I'm a little more sympathetic to Bob on this one. Um, bedroom, what was bedroom three on the plan? I'm always a little suspicious of four-foot cased opening. You have a nice sitting room there and you have bedroom two. Would you consider, uh, just really opening that up and either making it part of the sitting area or combining it with bedroom two and just, you know, basically totally getting rid of that room as a room?
Um, well, that sitting area is, uh, not depicted, uh, quite as accurate as it should be. The, the sitting area is really, um, a landing for the stairs that come up from the first floor. So it's not, it's not really a sitting area. It's, it's probably, oh, ten by, I'd say, uh, maybe ten by ten at the most. Uh, I see what you're getting at. Um, the issue with, uh, combining bedroom two with bedroom three is that is a, uh, a load-bearing wall. Um, so that would be, uh, this house was originally a Cape Town house. It was converted to a uh, center entrance colonial. So, uh, that is a bearing, a load-bearing wall right there.
So what do you anticipate doing with what was bedroom three?
That will become office space and, uh, again, I have younger grandchildren, so that'll be their, uh, upstairs play area, but mostly office space.
Because you have an office over the garage too, it looks like.
Um, that is going to become the bedroom. Uh, after my discussion with Scott McGann, he's, uh, proposal to, his suggestion to open up the, uh, bedroom, uh, three, uh, to make it a, a non-bedroom to deconstruct it, so to speak, would allow me a larger bedroom in, uh, the proposed living space, new proposed living space.
So is that shown on any of these plans? As that?
Uh, it's not labeled, no. But it is the area, it is the area between the den and the mechanical room.
Okay. All right. Well, again, similar to, I, I will agree with Bob that, you know, we ought to have a plan that shows what, and final form.
Okay.
Mary, anything?
Uh, um, I had a question, which was, I, I remember this coming before us before, and I thought we had a lot of discussion about what that space above the garage was going to be. Can you remind me, um, Mr. Kelly, what it was that you represented that area to be when you were before us before?
Yes, the, uh, the plan that I had before you on October seventeenth, actually, uh, previous to that, um, October seventeenth was our second meeting. Previous to that, um, I had everything labeled, uh, as it is today, except for that bedroom designation, which is missing. I don't, I don't know why that's missing, but it is. Um, but the previous, uh, meeting, you would ask me to, um, because I, I really only needed to complete the garage immediately for a car and boat storage and to allow me to remove the shed from my property. So it's also being used for shed storage. So you'd asked me to come back, um, after I removed all of the labels on that proposed living space, because that wasn't going to be, uh, completed right away. And you would also ask me to pencil in a proposed, uh, leaching expansion. Uh, rather than pencil it in, I had it engineered, which, uh, you should also have a copy of. Um, so I have a leaching area, um, expanded leaching area, uh, designed with a reserve area.
Okay, uh, but when you were before, before, was this going to be habitable space?
Yes, yes. It, but because I wasn't building it out right away, I was asked to remove the labels on it, uh, den, bedroom, kitchen, uh, wet bar, um, and come back with it, um, unlabeled. So it's just, it's just open space right now. I was allowed to stub it in with utilities for the future build-out, which it, and that's where it sits right now.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, Scott?
Yeah, Mr. Kelly, um, what is the level of completion of the, uh, the space over the, you said it's framed out. Is it sheet rocked and trimmed?
No, it's not, sir. It's, uh, just wide open. Uh, it's stubbed in with utilities and the electrician, uh, decided to electrify just a couple of lights for safety reasons, but other than that, um, it's just wide open. It's open to the studs. Um, there's no insulation in it. There's no heating equipment in it. Uh, there's no water that's turned on. And like I said, the only thing that, uh, went beyond the stub end was just, um, a few light fixtures just for safety reasons.
And you're not tied into the septic system?
It plumbed in, yes, but it's not, uh, there's nothing functioning on it.
So explain to me the deal you made with Scott about what you had to do to not have to put in an upgraded septic?
Well, he, he gave me the option because, um, there's supposedly a sewer line coming down Acapescot in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. So he allowed me the option of deconstructing my small bedroom, uh, in favor of, uh, building out this new larger bedroom.
Is that part of this application, sir?
The Scott McGann, I'm told, was going to make a comment on this. I don't know if he's done that.
Bob, did, nothing he has from a referrals reflect that, does it?
No, and I don't know if, you know, we'd have to check with Scott and get her, his word, but, you know, a planned expansion of a town sewer line in the future, five or six years, a lot of things can happen in five or six years. So I don't know how much you can rely on when, when a town sewer line may or may not be put in. He did put the comment.
The reason I ask that is because the way this is identified on this plan, um, that's a, that's a leach pit out there, which means it's pre-Title V. So it, it's, it's an older system. It's probably an original system if it hasn't been upgraded by now. And to wait five or six years or whatever, it's just kind of ambiguous.
Well, for that reason, for that reason, we did have this engineered rather than just drawn in as was required, as was requested by the board on October seventeenth. We had this fully engineered with a reserve area, uh, which should be a plan in front of you. Uh, so in the event that there's a failure or there's, uh, a, a lack of a sewer line going down at any time, uh, in the near future, I do have this area reserved for that build-out of the, uh, septic system.
So let me understand this. So you're proposing to make the adjustments to the interior bedrooms and, and that, rather than what's depicted on the, on, on the, uh, on this plan, right?
Um, are you saying that the area that's unlabeled?
No, no. Yeah, wh- when, when I look at this plan, I see a, a nice, brand-new septic system that's going to support this new living area.
Yeah.
Testimony prior to, uh, uh, you saying that, that you weren't going to use this. You were going to make some kind of adjustments inside the house with cased openings to not have to put in a new septic. Is that what your testimony was?
Well, yes, uh, we would continue with a three-bedroom house, uh, in that manner.
But you would frame out the living area as depicted on these plans over, over the garage?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Bob, any questions?
Yeah, so, Mr. Kelly, uh, going back to our original permit, the original permit required you to, um, submit an ASBIL to the zoning board, which we never received.
Uh, Is that an ASBIL for the septic?
No, an ASBIL for the garage, once the garage was completed. It's actually part of the original permit. The reason I ask is because it seems that we didn't receive that and, um, there are some dimensional inconsistencies with the special permit dimensions and the dimensions that came on the engineered plan that you currently submitted, which we would now use as the ASBIL, because it was engineered.
I, I'm, I'm not sure I understand you. Uh, the, the garage is built as planned. It, it wasn't changed by one inch.
So, but our, let me go back to the decision itself.
Okay.
So condition number five is once the garage was completed, that an ASBIL plan be provided to the zoning board of appeals. Um, in our decision itself, it refers to setbacks, refers to setbacks on Acapescot Road, receives two setbacks from the Western Lee Lot Line. Um, talks about garage height. Um, and on the current engineered plan, which we would now consider the ASBIL, those dimensions do not match. Um, the engineered plan also does not show the dimension from the handle lever decking above the garage to, um, Gary Avenue. Um, that engineered plan also shows that the landing is still in existence, which is on the other side of the house. And again, on our original permit, um, I'll get you the exact. Uh, that landing was to be removed along with the shed, so that still seems like that's still in existence.
As far as the, uh, shed goes, that has been removed. Uh, the landing is something I wanted to bring up tonight, uh, with you, uh, when, when you get a moment.
You can discuss it now if you'd like.
Yeah, I, uh, in my discussions with, uh, potential contractors, uh, primarily, uh, sheet rock, uh, contractors. They explained to me that the access from the, the new breezeway into the addition is, is nearly impossible for them. Uh, coming into that door, you bump into the closet in six and a half feet and to make a ninety-degree left turn with a ten-foot piece of sheet rock is very difficult. They, they had asked if I could, uh, maintain that, uh, landing through the construction, so they have a straight shot through the kitchen into the addition.
So what about the access from inside the garage itself into the breezeway?
There is no stairway. We had to remove that because of the, the, uh, framing and that was addressed with the, uh, I think Gary Street was out on that inspection. And, um, he required, uh, Ed Montero, the general contractor at that time, to, uh, give him a, a draw, uh, draw that up, uh, showing that that stairway was no longer in play.
So, Mr. Kelly, on the plans that you've submitted tonight that we're reviewing, that stairway is actually on the plans? And again, because we never got an ASBIL, we never got any revisions from the building department? And again, because we never got an ASBIL, we never got any revisions from the building department?
Okay.
So that would, that would have to be, um, modified on this plan, showing that that's removed, so that our plan again matches the plans with the building department? What was the, what was the reasoning for removing the stairway from interior of the garage? It just seems like you'd want garage access into the main house.
Well, we do through the mudroom, uh, through the breezeway basement, uh, down below. Uh, you can probably see that, uh, that, uh, see if I can find it here. Yes, on, uh, on A two, uh, there's a, no, wait a minute, I don't see it.
I, I think what's happened is that the plans that we have, we are original plans, and they're not your revised plans?
Okay, I'm sorry. It's on S one, on S one. Uh, going from the garage, it shows a crawl space or full, or full, uh, per site conditions. That's now a full basement, uh, and there is a, uh, uh, an entryway through there into the existing basement.
Okay, so, so, so is that? So on that S one, so that, that's now a full basement where the crawl was?
Right.
All right, so we need to have that ref- I mean, this just says crawl space or?
Correct.
Full per site condition. So was it site conditions that needed you to adjust this stairway?
Well, bec- no, it was the other way around. Because, because the main carrying beam, the thirty-six-foot carrying beam, was going to conflict with that stairway, we, we had to remove that, and that allowed that, um, to, to gain access to the house from the garage, we just, uh, made that crawl space a full basement, so that we could go through from the garage into the main house in lieu of that staircase.
And again, on that platform that's going to be removed, so they're suggesting it's easier for them to go through the entire house, then through the breezeway above the garage versus just trying to make the turn?
Yes, that's correct. If you look at the breezeway, the mudroom, uh, you go into that, uh, that door, and there's a closet, the corner of the closet is right there, where you would make left-hand turn to go up the stairs into the, um, into the living space. They said even with an eight-foot sheet of sheet rock, there would be a difficult, uh, a difficult time for them. So they were hoping to, uh, come in through the sliders off the deck where, where that landing is that we're discussing. And, uh, that would give them a straight shot into that, uh, stair, that staircase to the living space, uh, proposed living space.
I do, I do, um, have a question as per what Ed mentioned before regarding two means of aggress. Now that that second entrance to the garage has been eliminated, so I would like to find out some information from the building department. Um, I'd like to make sure that the plans that we have that you've submitted match actually the revised plans that were done with the building department.
Okay.
Uh, because without that, we're, we're, you know, we're kind of stuck. Um, you do need to have in those plans the dimensions, so we need to see ridge height. It doesn't show ridge height on any plans. We also don't see any distances between that deck and Gary Avenue. That needs to be on there. And if those dimensions from the setbacks from the rear and the street differ from what's in our original decision, we need to know that, so they could be adjusted in a new decision, because those dimensions were actually put in.
If you're going to ask for that, then you're going to have to identify where mean grade is for that, because there's so many different levels from, from the ground to the peak on that, so.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're going to need all that information, so we're going to need some, actually, some feedback too, from the building department on that revision they did, and if, why they did the revision. It just seems like an odd revision to do. Um, you know, just as a comment, I would ask, just like before, the same thing, that we have a, we have a, uh, deed restriction put in regarding it being as a separate living area. Um, this is larger than the last one. Uh, again, the applicant knows that it doesn't qualify, but when you're adding these large, um, basically kitchen areas that have these large counters, fridges, sinks, even though they're listed as a wet bar, um, in all likelihood, they're going to be used at some point for some kind of cooking here on the other end of the house, so. Uh, my only other question is, and it's just, it's just a, a visual. So I went by the site, and I've never seen, um, I don't know if it was curtains, but it looks like all the windows have been blacked out, almost like a black film on all the windows on this.
Yes, sir. There is a film on the glass, and those are all new windows. The, the space is not being lived in. There's no, no reason to, to peel all of that plastic off.
But will that eventually be, be peeled off, or?
Yeah, it's just Anderson peel-off stuff.
Okay, I've just, I've just never seen them on any, on any completed jobs with their left up, so that's why I questioned it.
Well, it's because the job isn't completed. It's, it's still in progress.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd request, um, some clarification with the discussion that he had with, uh, Scott McGann as well about what Scott was looking for in lieu of putting in a new system. Think that that should kind of be in the record, would.
Yeah, you know, Mr. Chairman, I, you probably remember, because I remember when we were on this decision before, and one of our concerns at that time was the septic, and that was the reason that they removed the setup from the plans. Uh, because they were nervous at that point that they would have to update the septic system. That was what was coming from the contractor at that point, so. So I think we do need a lot more information from Scott McGann on the septic system, and, um, and also a little bit more about, it's the first thing I've heard of a septic line going down Acapescot Road, which this is an aside, I'd like to know if that's something that's in the works for the town.
Um, as far as Scott goes, uh, he was out here when we did the engineering on this, uh, proposed septic expansion. He was out here for the, uh, the perk test. So he's, he's well aware of the, the engineering that was done on this.
But it doesn't reflect in the application, sir, and your discussion with him doesn't reflect in that as well?
Okay.
All right, so I know we're heading toward a continuation here, but, um, just want to offer public comment if anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project. Uh, I see two people. We'll take them one at a time. If we could elevate Michelle Bernard, please. Then, Michelle, if you could just state your full name and address for the record, along with any question, comment, or concern that you may have. And you're currently muted, so you'd have to unmute.
That was, that was a mistake.
Oh, you, you didn't mean to be elevated?
Oh, sorry about that.
No worries. All right, if we could drop them back down, and if we could elevate Catherine Hurdle.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello.
Hi, I am an abbot to Jim Kelly, and I have three points to make. First of all.
What's her address, Ms. Hurdle?
Oh, it's four Lieutenant Parfitt Road.
Thank you.
And I have three points to make, and I think you addressed two of them, but I'd like to address another one.
Go right ahead.
First of all, first of all, is the platform that was supposed to be removed, the four-by-six platform, which is not removed per the original plan. And you addressed that. Secondly, is a septic, which I've been here since nineteen eighty-eight, and that is the original septic. Nothing has been changed for thirty-two years. And thirdly, it was supposed to be rough electrical, and there's numerous outside lighting on the second floor. New addition of the dwelling.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hurdle. All right, we can drop her back down, please.
Uh, may I speak to that?
Sure, go right ahead, Mr. Kelly.
Uh, there is outside lighting. I didn't think that, uh, that was, uh, uh, that was, uh, not allowed, uh, under my permit. Uh, that, that, um, lighting is for, uh, I do have a, a completed garage there, so I do have outside lighting for that reason. So I don't see an issue with that. With regard to septic, uh, again, that's a Title V system that was passed when I bought the house in two thousand eight. Uh, Miss Kathy, Mrs. Kathy Hurdle just changed hers from a cesspool five months ago, so I don't see her environmental concerns there.
So, Mr. Kelly, you said that you, so your system was updated, what'd you say, two thousand eight?
No, he got a, a Title V permit, I mean, a Title V inspection.
Inspection?
Correct.
So do you have a copy of that inspection that you could submit to us? Or you can get one from the health department?
If I can find that or not, that was, that was quite some time ago. I can.
That's okay, we can re- we, we can request it from the health department then, because they'll have them on file.
That's a requirement of sale in Massachusetts, so, uh, I don't think they'd allow the sale of a house without that being completed.
So they?
That was twelve years ago, and, um, just by sheer virtue of the fact that it's calling for a strip out to the C layer, lets, lets everyone that knows that that's not the optimal, um, conditions for a septic. That's why it's labeled as a, as a strip out. And twelve years is a long time to go without, without having some kind of, um, update, and when you come before the board for a special permit, um, it, it, it opens us up to ask these questions, Mr. Kelly.
That area that, uh, requires a strip out was, uh, a big pit, five feet deep. It had twenty-six oak trees on it, and it was, uh, used as a leave catch-all for, I don't know how many years, decades, I'm sure. That's why that area required the strip out. Uh, the, where the housing was.
I, I, Mr. Kelly, forgive me. Um, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I've been doing systems for forty years. That's not what strip out means. Strip out to the C one layer means down to gravel, so.
I guess, I understand that. Uh, and the, the reason is they found a dark layer, a dark band of, of, uh, well, dark dirt that, that wasn't perkable. So they did say it would be a fifty to a hundred-yard strip out. I'm, I'm not arguing that point. But where the house is located is, is all sandy soil. It's not, this other was an unused part of the lot, been unused since the house was built in seventy-six. And that's why it was, uh, in, in the condition it's in.
Okay.
Mr. Kelly, have you been on any kind of a maintenance pump-out schedule since two thousand eight?
Yeah, we have that pumped, uh, about every year and a half. Well, first of all, this house was only used on weekends for the first nine years. We've only been here for three years permanently. So, um, it was very light, used very lightly. So, uh, since we've been here full-time, we've had it pumped, uh, actually twice in the last year, because we just did a hookup from the addition, uh, and they pumped that before, so it was pumped probably twice within the last, uh, I'd say fourteen months.
Thank you.
All right, so I think we're heading toward a continuation here. Um, and, Mr. Kelly?
I would, I would be happy to move for a continuation. I would note that the plans we have are not accurate. He needs to provide a set of accurate plans that show what he's intending to do. Looks to me like these are the plans from the prior special permit.
All right, so, Mr. Kelly, do, uh, do you understand what the board's looking for, uh, for the continuation?
Uh, I would like a list of that, if that's possible. Maybe Ashley could send that to me?
Sure.
It was not to delay your, your schedule tonight.
No worries. Um, Ashley, Noreen, can Ashley do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Fantastic. Okay.
Robert mentioned there should have been an ASBIL plan by the time you completed construction. Garage.
N- Noreen, what's a, what's a good date?
Getting busy fast. Um, I think you're probably going to need to continue to January seventh here.
I mean, what, what else is on January seventh? Is there a lot, or do you know?
Yeah, you have two fortyBs that night, plus three other cases.
All right, then.
That's light.
Yeah, I'd rather do it at a different date.
I agree with Bob.
And the date after that, that you have, is January twenty-first.
All right, so then I make.
I, I, I'll move that we continue to January twenty-first.
On second.
Plenty of time to bump the size plan.
Certainly is. So the motion to continue this hearing to January twenty-first was made by Ken, seconded by Bob. Roll call vote, Ed?
Hey, Ben, sure and I.
Ken?
And Forman, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
And TJ Hari, I. Mr. Kelly, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, up next, we have application sixty dash twenty, uh, Kaleli Green, Ten Bell Tower Lane in Woods Hole.
All right, so application number sixty dash twenty, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section eleven of Chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws. You were hereby notified that Peter Kaleli and Winnie Green of Dedham Mass have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a modification of special permit thirty-one dash zero one pursuant to Sections two forty-three, two forty dash twenty-three B. And, uh, to reduce the number of dwelling units from four to two units, add landings, remove a portion of the existing building and deck. Subject property is Ten Bell Tower Lane, Woods Hole. So regarding engineering, there was a, uh, a letter from D H Martin Engineering, Inc. So the, this revised engineering referral is based on that letter from eleven twenty-three, and this is the response. The engineering department reviewed the response letter from D H Martin Engineering to the zoning board of appeals dated November twenty-third, twenty twenty, regarding Ten Bell Tower Lane, appeal number sixty dash twenty. Below our original comments in italics, followed by the new comments in bold. So I'll just go by the bold. The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete work as approved by the engineering division. Um, they do request the above condition be included in any approval. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission by the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public properties or butters of public rights of way. The property, the project includes connection of roof leaders to drywells as typically recommended. Based on town policy for addresses, the main house will be Ten Bell Tower Lane. And the apartment unit would be Ten A Bell Tower Lane. The engineering division will assign the address when the applicant comes in for signing off on the permit. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for the residence per Section ninety-nine-one and fixing of legible numbers required in time for compliance. All construction materials should be stored on the property. Nothing shall be stored in the Bell Tower Lane right-of-way or the parking area for Taft Park. This is regarding to Bell Tower Lane is congested area at times and has come before the traffic advisory committee for parking issues in the past. Uh, the applicant shall obtain an approved street opening permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the street opening permit. We requested the below condition be included in any approval. All work should be completed from applicant's property. Should it become necessary to utilize the town right-of-way, the applicant shall obtain an approved street opening permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. We refer to the zoning board of appeals if the applicant should be referred to the select board to determine if a license should be required for the wall portions located within the town right-of-way, or if these wall portions should be removed. If the wall is removed from the right-of-way, we requested a condition be included in any approval that requires a street opening permit from the engineering division. We defer to the zoning board if the plan should be revised to include the basement entrance walls. We defer to the zoning board of appeals. If this should be considered as previously mentioned, parking is an issue. Has the applicant considered expanding the driveway to accommodate space for vehicles on the lot instead of relocating to the parking area? The plans we reviewed were not endorsed by a P L S, so we refer to the zoning board of appeals if the submitted plans are endorsed as required. You have all the engineering comments from the original permit, but that's just changes, no comments from planning. No comments from water, no comments from accessory. Uh, health, it's on sewer, so they deferred to the wastewater division. That's where we stand.
All right, thank you, Bob. And for the applicant tonight, we have Attorney Monahan. Oh, you're on mute, Attorney Monahan.
My apologies. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, with me tonight should be David Martin uh in the waiting room as well as the applicant. And with your permission, I'd like to just share my screen and I'll show you um a brief presentation.
Go right ahead.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a brief comment, because I missed one. It's from Amy Lowell. She just did say that the project does not need a flow-neutral bylaw variance. If the project involves changes to the existing sewer connections on the property, then the work will need to apply for sewer connection modification permit with a plan attached showing the existing and proposed sewer connection layout on the property.
All right, thank you, Bob. And Attorney Monahan, whenever you're ready, go right ahead.
Okay, this um application, oh, we're at the end here. Start at the beginning. Sorry about that. Uh, this is the property located in Woods Hole. Just giving you a G I S map to give you um a location on it. Um, it's off of Bell Tower Lane, and this area here is uh the town public park area. Here's some pictures of the existing home. It's um quite large dwelling, built around eighteen seventy. Um, here's another view of it. Um, one of the elevations as well. And again, another photograph. And this is the driveway area coming in off of Bell Tower Lane. Uh, it, this house was approved in two thousand and one for four dwelling units. And so this application is to modify um that approval to reduce the number of dwelling units to two. Um, the applicants have acquired the property. They intend to live in one of the units and use the other unit for uh family members. It's quite a bit of renovation that's going to be required um on the structure inside and out, so they'll be making a pretty large investment in it and improving it. Um, this is a picture of Bell Tower Lane looking from the structure down the road. I just put these in to show you, uh, this area is typically where the public parks, and there is uh permit parking required in Woods Hole. This is a photograph of the park across from um the house. And this is another photograph of the uh public parking area. And more public parking here. Uh, this is the site plan which you have in your file, showing the expansiveness of the house here on the property. And we have some floor plans. These are the existing uh floor plans showing the four units. There are eight bedrooms in total. Um, on these, these are the existing elevations. Um, so the changes to the exterior are going to involve um a new entry door here in this area. All right, um, these stairs here will be removed as well. On this elevation, the north and south elevation, this stairwell here will be removed. This air decking here area here will be removed. There'll be a larger window put in here. Uh, this area here, decking area will be removed. Uh, this slider window will be removed and two uh normal-sized windows added in. And this uh extension here will be removed, just this piece where the window is. And then you'll have some new doorways, new French doors um here. So some changes to the exterior of the dwelling. Uh, these are the proposed floor plans. So there'll be two units, as I said, seven bedrooms in total um shown on the floor plans. These are the proposed elevations, just showing you that instead of the stairwell area here, you're gonna have this this new decking system. And uh, south and north elevations, new landing areas. These are the new French doors I mentioned. And this is the area in here where you have that expansive uh or that expansion coming off. So as far as the existing conditions go, it is obviously a developed neighborhood in Woods Hole. The existing lot coverage is non-conforming by structures at forty point four percent. The lot is eighty-two hundred and fifty square feet. It's zone residential C. The existing overall lot coverage is forty-three point seven percent. The project involves, as I said, removing some existing decks, removing a section of the building, relocating the paved parking, installing new landings, interior alterations to reduce the dwelling units from four to two. And the proposed lot coverage by structures, there'll be a slight reduction of three point five percent and a slight reduction as well of overall lot coverage of two point seven percent. Uh, this application is under section two forty dash three and two forty dash twenty-three B, two forty dash three because the site is non-conforming um as to lot coverage for the structure and overall um the allowed lot coverage, as you know, in the district is twenty percent by structures and forty percent overall um or up to twenty-five percent by special permit for structures. Um, two forty dash twenty-three B is the section of the bylaw that allows a house that's been in existence since nineteen eighty to be converted into up to four dwelling units. So as I mentioned, this property was granted a special permit in two thousand and one to approve the multifamily use. So we are seeking a modification of that. Um, as far as the zoning bylaw standards go, there would be a decrease in impacts on adjacent properties or neighborhood by reduction dwelling units, no adverse traffic impacts. There would be a decrease in the required parking. Public parking is available right by resident permit. In the two thousand and one decision of the zoning board, the board, the board did make findings that public parking was available on the street and in the park by permit. Um, here we would have two dwelling units, so the required parking would be four spaces. The um existing required parking, I believe, is seven and a half spaces, given the four units. Um, the exterior improvements would be a benefit to the neighborhood. Um, I don't believe this structure is on any, you know, cultural resources inventory or or uh formally designated a historic structure, but I think by nature, just having been built in eighteen seventy, um it does have a historic value certainly to Woods Hole and the neighborhood to have somebody come in and put the investment into it to preserve it rather than taking it down. Uh, no increase in the bedrooms, decreasing from eight to seven. And as far as the standards go, I think um it is fair to say it's not substantially more detrimental than the existing beneficial impacts to the neighborhood are there. And therefore, the standards of two forty-three and two forty-two sixteen have been met. Um, I'd just like to address um some of the comments from the um engineering department very quickly. Out of it that were recited, the driveway permit, the bond, the utilities, you know, storage on property, the street opening permit, all work from the property, all, you know, acceptable um typical conditions. Um, the license deferral on the stone walls, again, as we've seen in other applications, if the board is inclined to want to address that um and condition the permit, then um we would ask that that be addressed prior to final building uh final sign-off on the building permit so that the applicant isn't delayed many months in in trying to address that. Um, this seems to be a recurring request of the engineering department. And um, you know, uh for those, and you know, I'm sure, looking at these applications, there are many, many, many encroachments into public ways. So the Board of Selectmen and Town Council are gonna be very busy by new process of um requiring these things to be addressed. But aside from that, um as far as the um driveway expansion goes, um Dave Martin can talk a little bit more about that as well. But um, just like to to comment that um the site does slope uphill from the road onto the property. So um increasing the depth of the pro- of the parking into the site is going to require um carving deep into the hill to avoid runoff into the public way, which we think is um a major um change on the property. Um, we don't really see it as necessary, given that we we are de- decreasing the parking requirement here. Um, and uh obviously the number of cars by the number of units. Um, the parking width could be increased, but that would mean then decreasing the public parking available on Bell Tower Lane. So again, um I think it's a balance between, you know, what's what's been used there now for almost twenty years for double the number of units and what the applicant is proposing to accommodate on-site. If there is an overflow, as has been used for many, many years, the public resident parking would be used. The entrance walls um that um are mentioned by engineering, these are really no more than a small collection of stones um that are piled on each side of the doorway. So again, Mr. Martin can comment further on that or answer questions, but we don't really feel that that's um an actual wall. Um, they're entirely within the exterior or outer part of the um of the structure. Um, we did refi- file revised plans that were endorsed by a a land surveyor. So um I think with all of that, I hopefully I got through all of that quickly and um be happy to to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Monahan. Uh, so was it your attention for Mr. Martin to address some issues or was you wanna bring that up through board questioning?
I just think if there are questions, I mean, we're trying, obviously, we know you're busy, so we're trying to just get through this efficiently. But if if you have further questions, or I haven't given you enough information, then Dave is certainly available as well to to answer.
Very good, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Uh, so we'll turn it to board questions. Uh, Ed, you have anything?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, Ed. Ken.
Seems like the only real issues are the engineering ones associated with driveway. How how will that be resolved?
Well, we've provided for what is really the same area of parking on-site as has existed for twenty years with a four-unit apartment building that was allowed by the zoning board. And so we're asking that because the number of units is being reduced to two, there's a decrease in intensity of use, that that parking area is still satisfactory as is with the modification of it being relocated further to the southwest, uh which would require, I gather, a street opening and, you know, review by the engineering department. But I guess the point is that we're decreasing impacts and um improving a condition at the same time. And again, there still is ample resident parking available on Bell Tower Lane and within the public park if there happens to be an overflow here. But we don't see it as an issue.
You're muted, Ken.
I guess there's also some engineering issues with whether during construction their way and so forth.
I think the other engineering conditions that were suggested were acceptable um from what Dave is has indicated. We can do all of that. Storage on property, driveway permit bonding, all work from the property, et cetera. So those conditions that were suggested would be acceptable.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ken. Bob, any questions?
No, so just again on the engineering, uh just just to, for clarification, so basically item number nine is the one um that you feel that they've met because of the reduction?
Correct. I I I don't, I think that the parking area as proposed on the site plan, um it's wider and it's going to be improved. And I think that, given the reduction in number of units, it's a condition that um is satisfactory as is.
All right, thank you.
Scott, any questions? You're muted, Scott. Scott, you're muted.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
One hand, have you given any consideration to expanding the request language uh to address anything you may find in this in this old house that that will not put a snag in the in the uh in the completion of the project? If it was in, like unforeseen circumstances, and I saw some of the sills were pretty rotted and stuff like that. I was wondering if you might add some language to the permit which would keep you from having to come back. Uh, so it was already addressed in the permit, if uh when and if it's issued. Does that make any sense?
Uh, well, I I appreciate the thought, certainly. I'm not sure. Um, I I'm not sure I can think of an instance, maybe Dave, by uh myself, why we would have to, why we would come back.
Well, we said, I was, I'm I'm simply mentioning that because we've run into circumstances before when wha- would you say eighteen seventy this house was built? Sometimes when you're, when you're deconstructing things, you run into uh uh obstacles that you weren't anticipating. And sometimes those require a permit. I just didn't know if you wanted to add some language to the request that would cover that rather than have to come back to revise the special permit or seek other ve- uh other permits, so.
Well, certainly, I mean, uh, you know, it's it's a great suggestion and I appreciate it. I mean, it, a- and I think it would be at the at the uh will of the board, but something I might foresee is if there have to be alterations to, you know, placement of deck posting postings or um landings, you know, slight modifications that those could be approved by the zoning administrator. I mean, sure, that would be helpful. I mean, David, can you think of anything else that?
Uh, no, I guess I'm, I I appreciate, uh, good evening, thank you. Trying to understand the concern, if the board chooses to approve the project to alter the layout of the interior of the building and a contractor owner discovers some deteriorated wood, presumably building code would allow him to replace it.
And also, yeah, uh, the reason I said that was to be more uh uh to be able to explain that more is because you were so specific on what you were going to do with these renovations, it kinda cut out anything else that you may have to do. Um, and I just didn't know, uh, it was just a simple question if you had considered expanding the language. I mean, it's not a
Well, I'm. Yeah, I mean, I I think that if the boards and, boards incline something to the effect that minor um modifications to the interior floor plans or exterior, you know, deck or landing plans could be approved administratively by the zoning administrator, something to that effect, and it would be discretion if it has to come to the board or not, you know, but certainly that, that's always helpful.
That was just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Scott, one last, one last thing. Scott, on, thank you on that, and I, in, uh, your concerns, I believe, have been anticipated. Everyone expecting the uh building to be fairly deteriorated and needed sense of structural repair in order to carry out was proposed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Mary, any questions?
Yeah, I don't have any concerns. The, we have a question, which is prior to to this, were these year-round rentals?
Uh, yes, I believe they were.
Okay, and now it will be a single-family use? Okay, and now it will be a single-family use?
It'll be, uh, well, two-family. One family owning the entire building, however. And as I said, um, the applicants um, are are living there now, using one of the units. And would be using the other unit for family members, I guess.
Uh, James, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, James.
I don't have any questions myself. The engineering was already addressed. Uh, any follow-up questions from the board at this time?
I just one brief question regarding the units. Were any of the previous units affordable?
They weren't res- no, they were not, to my knowledge, they were not restricted in the prior permit. I I think actually I did that application many years ago. But there were, there were no restrictions on the rental incomes on on those units.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, so the only thing I'd say is this promises to be a a vast improvement in the building and in the use. And but, you know, there are these outstanding questions. On drainage, for example, I don't, I don't know, is there a? Are there drainage designs in the existing plans that have been submitted? I don't think I'd find them that would satisfy the engineering concerns. So do we need, what I'm driving at is, do we need to get final provisions on these plans?
Well, we did, we did, um, the plans do show um, dry wells. And and I think those were addressed by the engineering department. I think they signed off on that. Rob, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that was my.
Yeah, most, most of the issues they had, just just the ones in bold were outstanding. But we can just go with conditions with the current um, conditions that were outstanding by engineering division. And then we can choose to. We can choose to uh. Remove number nine if we'd like. And also, um, as far as number eight, the license, we can do that as a deferral, try to sign off of the building permit.
Alright. Y'all second? Alright. Uh, turn it to uh, public comment. If anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding the project, go ahead and hit the raise hand button. Utilizing the Zoom app and we can get to you in a moment. Anyone out there at all? Going once, going twice. Alright, doesn't look like any public comment. Any follow-up questions from the board? Alright, how would the board like to proceed?
Make a motion to close.
A motion to close by Scott and I will give that second to, um, sorry, it wasn't really.
Give it to Ed.
Give it to Ed. Give it to Ed. Alright, motion to close, uh, roll call vote, Ed.
Agreed. Ed Banker, yes.
Thank you, Ed. Ken?
And Forman, I.
Robert Dugan, I.
Uh, where, Scott, there you are.
You mean to tell me you can miss me?
And TJ, hurry, I, so the hearing is closed. Would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion to approve with conditions.
Alright.
Second.
Motion approved with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Ken. Findings?
So two forty dash three, two forty dash twenty-three B, two forty dash two sixteen, that's essentially more detrimental. Also, Article forty-three of the Code of Famits reduced the number of dwelling units from four to two. They're gonna add landings and remove portion of the existing building and deck. Uh, there's a reduction in bedrooms from eight to seven. Does not trigger the flow neutral bylaw. There's a slight reduction in lot coverage, a three-point-five percent reduction in uh, coverage by structure. Two-point-seven reduction in structure parking and paving. With the decrease in units, there'll be a decrease in the impact on the adjacent properties in the neighborhoods.
Might mention parking.
Yeah, we should. I mean, how does the board want to discuss the parking? Do you have any, any issue with relocating or just go with the parking that's there? I mean, they are, they are reducing the unit, so.
Yeah, and they're on sewer. If they're on sewer, they can park up up where one of those those decks were, I mean.
So maybe just make a a finding that there's a reduction in units, so the parking space provided is adequate due to the reduction.
Well, they're both, I think they're also making a modest expansion in the parking area, right?
Just by sheer virtue of what they're getting rid of.
Yeah.
But they're improving. Access to parking.
I'd agree.
Sure.
Uh, also notate that the, even though they're reducing the units, none of the previous units were allocated as affordable. So there's no loss of affordable units.
Alright, any other findings?
I guess we should make a finding regarding the stone walls in the public. Right of way that may need a license or removal.
Alright, anything else for findings?
Hey, uh, should probably continue the finding from the last permit regarding, um, tap to end that area, just that it's had traffic impact concerns before.
Right.
And I don't, so so this is just a modification on a reduction. So do we need to repeat all about, you know, building materials onsite or? We do conditions or is that just? So we do that, Noreen? So I guess our conditions, if we're done with the findings.
Go right ahead.
Uh, so we'd have to make it per plans. Uh, include all the engineering comments as discussed, except for number nine. And on number eight, the license deferral regarding the stone walls would be prior to final sign-off of the building permit.
Instruction hours and times.
Yeah, we should add against the the normal that we've had on the other ones for construction hours. Also that all um, building materials and construction vehicles must be on site.
Cause there is a playground right there across the street, I mean.
And Noreen, you usually add that line in about uh, someone to contact if there's any issues.
We can certainly do that.
Alright, any other conditions?
Uh, I just, does anybody want an as-built or no?
No, they're not, I mean, they're not expanding the building, they're reducing.
They're actually reducing.
Rare that we see that. Alright, any other conditions?
Um, I think you also typically offer that the assessors will be invited for a walk-through. Prior to the final sign-off by the building department.
Sure. Anything else? Alright, so if that does it for findings and conditions, Bob made the motion to approve the project with conditions. Uh, that was seconded by Ken. We'll do a roll call vote. Ed?
Hey, Dan Kieran, I.
Ken?
And Forman, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zilinski.
And TJ, hurry, I, so the uh, passes unanimously with conditions. Attorney Monehan, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate all your work. Thanks. Thank you, David.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Alright.
So, Mr. Chairman, could we do a five-minute?
We can, and just before we do that, I just want. I'm gonna make the announcement, uh, sixty-two dash twenty Locust Field LLC, uh, just in case if anyone joined us late. Uh, we took that out of order at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, the board is not opening that hearing, not opening that hearing. We are taking no action. Uh, the board's previous decision on that subject property uh, was appealed to of the committee. Which was formerly known as the Housing Appeals Committee. Uh, so no action is being taken at this time. We are waiting for the appeal process to play out. Uh, so I just wanted to get to that. I didn't want anyone to be waiting around for coming back, so. We will take a five-minute break and we will be back shortly. And we have application sixty-three dash twenty Helma Circle LLC, seven vacant lots off of Worcester Court and Helma Circle in Falmouth. Requesting a modification of comprehensive permit ninety dash seventeen to allow modification to previously approved plans.
So in application number sixty-three dash twenty, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that Helma Circle LLC of North Reading, Mass has applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a modification of comprehensive permit ninety dash seventeen pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter forty B, to allow modification to previously approved plans. The subject properties are seven vacant lots off Worcester Court in Helma Circle, Falmouth, Mass. Noreen, is there anything else that has to be read in?
I don't think so at this time.
All right. Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Noreen. And for the applicant tonight, we have Attorney Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if you can elevate them at the same time, but first for the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group and Yarmouth Board representing the applicant. And I'm going to be brief, and I do think you, I don't know if you can only do it one by one, but we do have the main speakers are the applicant, Brian Kelleher and his partner Randy Lilly, and a little bit by Brendan Carr from Decree Engineering. So as long as you can elevate them, you know, as I introduce them, that would be great. If you can elevate them now, that's up to you. I just wanted to make sure you knew they were here.
Sure. It looks like Tom's doing that now, so they'll be on standby whenever you need them.
Okay, great. Thank you. So in a nutshell, we are here because the applicant in reviewing plans and as time has progressed, as often happens, they do sincerely believe that the proposed plans are a big improvement. We know that the garages are something that had been discussed initially at the initial hearing as well as at the request for an insubstantial change, and we understand that we're here for a public hearing, which we respect, you know, the reason why you're here, why we're here. So that's understood. And but there really is a great explanation for it, and we truly think it's aesthetically better. And the quick points that I'll just go over and then leave the details to Brian and Brandon. There are no changes to the proposed lots or the setbacks. Everything that we're doing is within the same footprint or even reduced compared to what the requirements, the current conditions of the comprehensive permit are, including no increase in lot coverage. The garages I already mentioned, just to point out, it's all in my initial letter requesting the change. There's proposed, the proposal is to have garages on twenty-two out of the twenty-eight lots. And different from the initial hearing, there will now be, as per our request, if approved, six of the affordable lots, houses out of the seven, which is actually a slightly greater percentage than twenty-two out of twenty-eight. So, you know, I think that that is a big, a big change. And again, there's no increase in overall coverage. We don't need any change in waivers because we're staying all within the required setbacks and all of that. On the twenty-two houses that will have garages, the sheds will be removed and that removes some of the coverage and also, you know, buildings that were close to, to other houses. So I think I already said there are no additional waivers requested. And there is, in fact, a decrease overall with some of the footprints being decreased and some of the driveways also being decreased. There is a net overall reduction in the impervious areas. So without further ado, in my part, especially at this late hour, which we appreciate your being, you know, or being with us and paying full attention, even at this late hour, I should say, I'll just turn it over to Brian. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Freeman. Looks like Brian's muted at the moment.
And okay, thank you. My name is Brian Kelleher. I'm a partner in Helma Circle LLC and the Aspen Group, the applicant. And we're really here tonight to talk about, you know, what we think just makes it a better project. We spent a lot of time overlook going through the house designs after we got, received approval and settled on a butter issue. And that's where we're here tonight to talk about. You know, we just think they approved sightlines and overall aesthetics. We did hire a local designer for Tom from Tommit, who does a lot of work in the upper Cape to help us design these houses. We think they have much more of a Cape feel and look. As Peter indicated, we have included garages on twenty-two of the lots. We've designed the garages to be within the building footprints, if you will, the single car direct access garages. We feel to reduce the cars parking on the driveways in the street. We've eliminated sheds on these twenty-two lots. We've kept sheds on six of the lots that we're proposing that do not have garages. And we've allocated six of these houses with the garages to the affordable, affordable house lots, which there are seven. As Peter said, I mean, one of the tricks here was to try to work and get these new designs once we kind of went through them to work within our prior approvals. And we were very diligently do that and not have any impacts on frontage, lot coverages, footprints on any of the lots at all. And then many of the lots, we were able to reduce the impacts. And I think as Peter mentioned, overall, I think we had about a six point two percent reduction in overall impervious area. We have met with some of our butters. We've actually become friendly with some of our butters, which is interesting. We've made some good relationships. Yeah, we've been through, we haven't, we haven't seen, you know, all of them, but we have met with some of them that we could. We tried to have a formal meeting, but it's kind of tough with the COVID. We presented the plans in detail, and I don't want to speak for your butters, but I can tell you in our meetings, they all indicated that they look favorably upon the new designs. We have provided a lot of information just with the new, you know, world order here with, with Corona coronavirus. We just wanted to have every, all the information at our fingertips here for any questions that the board may have and happy to go through any of the site plans or renderings and respond to any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Brian, do you want to go through the plans, you know, just briefly? I think it might just be quickly for you, you know, to explain also the basic changes are obvious, but you, I think there were few specifics on modified Cape and things or ranch and things like that.
Yeah, why don't we, this is the, this is the approved site plan, okay? And you know, the, the red dash lines show kind of the development zones that were approved with the, with the site plan. Go to the next page, Brandon. And this is the lot area and setback charge chart, which kind of locked in, if you will, all the setbacks, frontages, sheds, lot areas, building areas, et cetera, impervious. So that was our starting point to see if we could come up with an improved house design that met all those requirements. Go ahead, go ahead, Brandon. These were the former house designs that were approved. And, you know, I think, you know, honestly, at some of the prior hearings, you know, I knew there was an overall question on density. But, you know, some of the comments that we did have at some of the prior hearings that were, you know, not so favorable about the individual house design. So we took those to heart. Go ahead, Brandon. This is a new, this is a new layout, if you will. As you can tell, it looks very similar to, you know, if we put them up, we put them side by side, it would be hard from some of the distance to really make, to tell the difference, if you will. And we've, we've added, you know, setbacks and, you know, dimensions on the plans. We broke, we can break out any individual loss where we put a few of the lots at the bottom of the page. Next page, Brandon. And now this is the revised setback chart, which goes with our revised site plan. A similar format to what there was before, though we did add a driveway, a column for driveway area. And the same logic, the same math. You can see in the middle there, the sheds where there's now only sheds on six of the lots where before they're on twenty-two. And so this goes with our proposed new plan. Next page, Brandon. I know there's a lot of information here, folks. This is an overlay plan, and we can pull up once again any of the one lots, but this kind of shows, you know, the old house layout overlaid with the new house layout and then the math down below in terms of, you know, what the square footage is look like. So, you know, a question could be, geez, how can you add a garage and not, you know, add any, any overall footprint area? And these, these are three of the lots that we just broke out because we can only fit it on this page, but we could pull up any of the lots. And it just kind of shows the math where the footprints were very similar. You know, the garage has increased. We kind of stole some of the square footage. We had front, we had porches that went, you know, from side to side. And so we kind of traded some of the porch area, a little bit of the square footage, removed the sheds. And overall, you can see where, you know, the math, you know, the, the approved, the previous versus the proposed plan. There you go. I know, you know, we don't want to, we can go, we can go, we're happy to go through whatever you folks want tonight. We know, you know, we know there's a lot of detail here, but so for instance, on lot nine, you know, the footprint went down seven feet. The garage increased two hundred and twenty-two feet. The bonus room, if the bonus rooms, those are like sun porches or bonus rooms, those are going to be an extra on the houses. So they may, you know, they, they, they're at the option of the buyer either when they purchase the house or in the future, but all the, all our impacts are based on the bonus rooms being included. So we reduced that a few feet. The covered, covered porch, you can see went down a fair amount. The bulkhead, we reduced it a little bit and we removed the shed and then the driveway dry. So the house, the house area on this particular one stayed, you know, at level par, if you will. And then we were able to reduce the driveway area. Each house remains with two, two spots out front. And then, you know, the pavement went down because we were able to put one of the cars inside the drive, inside the garage. Lot seventeen was very similar. And then if you could move over, Brandon, to the ranch. We had three, we have three ranches that were in the previous approved plan, and we also have three ranches proposed. You know, what we did on those, when we get to the, maybe we get to the renderings, we can show you. I really liked this house design and we had everything kind of squeezed on one floor and it took up a lot of the site. It was actually, the footprint was, I think, sixteen hundred and sixteen square feet. And what we did is we took the second, third bedroom, moved them upstairs. We kind of call it a two-story ranch, which I know isn't a thing. We got to come up with a better name, but for right now, the, so we actually reduced the footprint by about five hundred square feet. Then we added about three hundred square feet overall to the living area, although the impervious actually went down, as you can see, about five hundred square feet because the house footprint is much smaller. So we have the, the mouth on every lot. As I said, we worked hard to, you know, live within the setbacks that we had. This is kind of like our go-to chart, if you will, which is kind of in summary. I know there's a lot of information here, folks. It just compares the proposed, what our proposed plan is with the, with the prior approval for all the setback components and, if you will, and impacts. So you can see on frontage, no change in frontage, setbacks, no change in setbacks. Total lot area, no change in lot areas. On sheds, we've reduced twenty-two sheds. On building area, which is really defined as footprint area, you can see where we reduced, that we didn't, we had no increases on any of the lots and had an overall, a modest overall decrease of three percent. The driveway areas were reduced fifteen percent, mostly because we're trading garage area a little bit for pavement. But then overall, you know, I think is a good result. We're able to reduce the impervious area by about six, six point two percent. You can tell we had Brandon working hard, crunching numbers for the past several months, trying to figure all this stuff out. And he did a great job for us. Maybe you can go forward to a couple of the, we talked about the garages. We know that's a controversial issue, folks. We wouldn't be back here unless we felt this made this a better overall project, believe me. You can see where the old plan, the next page, Brandon. The old plan, the garages were just kind of attached to the houses. They were very close to the setback lines. There were ten of them. We had none allocated to the affordable lots. And, and what, what we essentially did is we pulled those into the houses, changed the configurations a bit, stayed within the, all the guidelines as we've talked about. And now have twenty-two lots with garages, which are really incorporated into the building footprints. And then the house designs, we really, we really just kind of tweaked the house designs, if you will. We think we've made them better. I think they're aesthetically a lot more pleasing, but the footprint and flow inside, especially on the first floor, very similar. They're all three bedrooms, two and a half baths, first floor master suite, open floor plan. We tried to bring a lot of natural light into the new designs. There's a half bath and laundry on the first floor, two bedrooms and a full bath on the second floor. One thing we did do is we did increase the second floors a little bit, and this is really a result of what's going on in the world today. Most new house designs, you know, national home builders, they're building in a little bit of home office study area, breakout area space for whether people are all working from home or we've got kids from college or whatever who are working from, you know, taking school from home or whatever. So we added a loft area to the second floor. It's not a, not going to be a fourth bedroom. We'd happy to put it in it. And that's not our intent at all. It's just try to have the best house we can today that meets, you know, initial designs were done four years ago, and certainly the world has changed a lot in the last six months. The let's go to the next page. This kind of shows the layout, if you will, Brandon, go back one page. This shows, this is a, it shows a different type of houses. So the, the MC is what we call a is a, is a, is our, is our house without the, without the garage. The BC is a base cape, as we call it, with the garage. And that's how we would allocate them to the lots throughout. So our previous design, we kind of had two houses that could have gone on most of the lots. And then we have three ranches, as you can see on lot twenty-seven, twenty-five and twenty-four. We've, we've allocated the, the house designs. And what we would probably do in our design is we'd probably start in the back middle of the development and work our way out towards Worcester Court and have all the pedestrian access, if you will, off of Alma. And then have our construction access off of Winston Court and work our way out of the project. So the butters would not get the truck traffic, if you will, throughout the project. Next, next slide, Brandon. Yeah, this is just some math on, on, on kind of the house. Next one, Brandon.
Mr. Keller, I hate to interrupt you, but we've reached the fifteen-minute mark.
Can I just show you a couple of house designs?
Sure. Did, well, how much time do you want?
Two minutes.
Oh, all right. Yeah, we can give you two minutes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. This is the, the modified Cape. There would be six of these. It's about seventeen hundred square feet and change. It's about 1700 square feet and change. Uh, back view. Uh, house, floor plans are very similar to our, uh, some, our prior plans, second floor, Brandon. You can just see on the second floor, we've added a loft area, the, the entry area is open to below. And we have skylights and a lot of natural light throughout the house. Uh, we think it's a nice layout. Next page is the basement. Then next page, Brandon. So this is a very similar house, but it has the garage attached to it. So very similar layout with the attached single axis, um, garage. Side view, back view, floor plan with the garage. Second floor is exactly the same. Pretty much a little bit, just a little wrinkle on the closet. Then the last design that we have, there's three of them. This is, uh, what we've misnamed the two-story K I ranch, but we think is a great, a cool little design. It's got a wraparound porch. The, um, on the side there, that's on three lots, uh, the master bedrooms in the back here. Open area in the front and then the second floor, two bedrooms and then once again, a loft area. That's open, has an open opening down to the entry area. So we appreciate your time, folks, to present this. Um, we think, bottom line, you know, I think we pretty much end up in the same spot, you know, uh, on this project, you know, whether, whether it's the new design or the old designs. This is all about, at least from me, who will be running this project, that we're building the best project that we can here, uh, given where we are today. And, uh, we, we think these designs, uh, get us there, uh, and just make it a better project. I think it makes it a, you know, a better opportunity to have a successful project, which I think is good for all parties. And I really appreciate the time and happy to respond to any questions.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we will turn it to board questions. Let's see. Scott, you're, you're right next to me on the Brady Bunch squares. Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Can we open the screen back up so I can see who I'm talking to by any chance?
Sure. If we could, um, minimize that. Thank you.
Mr. Kelleher, um, what, what is the percentage of the way the project was designed originally with, um, the garage space to the garage space now? What's the percentage of added living space above the garages that was on the prior plan?
So in terms of living space, in terms of total living space, the total living space, in terms of living space, I, above the garage is, is not livable space and in, and.
It's not inhabitable at all?
It's not inhabitable, although there could be storage and on, uh, in the design that we show. We, we marked it storage in terms of the base cape and the modified cape. It, it's not inhabitable in the ranch. But the total, total square footage for the entire project is an increase of 687 square feet in livable area. Or 25 square feet per house on the average. Now, I, I could, we can, we don't have that slide, but I can provide it to you.
No, no, just keep going.
Okay.
That was one question. My other question is I've, I've, you'll have to forgive me. I've never seen a two-story ranch before. Uh, uh.
I haven't either. So we're on the same page, Scott. We need a new name. We're open for suggestions. We was a ranch before, so we called it a two-story ranch, but, uh, it's on the same lots. We'll come up with a better name.
And if you had to give me, if you had to convince me in, in, in one paragraph, how the changes to this fit under the subtitle of insubstantial, well, how would you explain that to me?
You know, I think.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if, if I could just step in, I'll, I'll let Brian, you know, answer in a minute, but, um, you know, we understand that you already voted that it's not insubstantial, that it is substantial, which is why it necessitated the public hearing, uh, with public comment, which we respect. So, I mean, I'm not, you know, Brian can certainly answer, but we're not in any way basing our case on the fact that it's insubstantial.
Okay. Let me rephrase my question, Attorney Freeman, then. Would you be in agreement that you're added, you're adding bulk to, to the project rather than decreasing bulk with this proposal?
Well, I don't think we are, but I'll let Brian and Brandon Carr respond.
Sure. I, I, we work very hard, um, to not increase bulk. I think overall, the living spaces increased, as I said, by 687 square feet over, over 28 lots. We have decreased, uh, impacts, if you will. We've added a little bit more square footage. But as we went through the math with you on every lot in that chart, we have not, we have not increased the footprint. And in, in effect, they decreased it by 3% on the footprint area and 6% by the impervious area. The only thing we have added is we've added six, uh, because the second floor has got a little bit bigger. Over the 28 lots, we added 687 square feet. I'd be, I just don't, we don't have that math on the screen tonight. I apologize, but that, that's it. We, on every, every, every lot, there was no increase in impacts. In fact, a decrease in maybe half of them.
In every unit, including the affordable ones, the, the, um, what's the ratio between, uh, uh, the increase, the 600 square feet per unit? Uh, do they all, are they all apples to apples as far as the increase in, in?
No, the, the, they're not. The, and it depends because some houses will get bonus rooms and some don't. But if you will, the ranches actually increased overall by 300 square feet each. The ranches, even though the footprint, interestingly enough, got reduced by 500 square feet. The second floor became bigger and so we, we have less impact, what we thought is good. And then all of a sudden, the second floor got bigger. So overall, the house got a little bit bigger. It's honestly a little bit bigger than we kind of wanted it to be, but I mean, it lays out great. The other houses are very close and the affordable houses, there's, there's no, just the affordable houses will be the same house as the other houses. So for instance, our, our, our house with the garages, there's 19 of them. There's 22, but the base cape, there's 19 base capes, which is our, our, you know, our, our non, our non quote ranch that have garages. Six out of those 19 will be affordable and 13 will be market rate. And then one of the, uh, one of the modified capes will be affordable. The percentage of affordables will be, you know, overall, there's 78% garages. 86 affordable houses will have garages and only 76 market rate houses will have garages. So we tried to, we know the garages were controversial. We tried to take a, a, do whatever we could to kind of convince you that, you know, give us a shot at doing the garage as we think it makes the project better.
Good. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, reserved for later.
Sure, Scott. Thank you. Ken, any questions?
Yeah, uh, so but, um, the bonus room is, will be, i- i- if the owner does not elect to build a bonus room, it's just a deck, is that? Am I understanding that right?
It could be just, yeah, it could be a deck. It could be just backyard. Some people may want the extra backyard space.
Okay, but all of the footprints that you've shown on the layout include the bonus room?
Yes, because we wanted to maximize, we, we had to calculate benefits. Um, so we, I mean, we had to calculate impacts, you know, uh, worst case, if you will.
Right. Uh, so approximately, how large is the bonus room? Like how many square feet less would the footprint be if they just had it be?
Hundred square, hundred, hundred square feet less.
10 by 10.
10 by 10.
So the only issue I have is, is by making it, obviously it's something that is unlikely that if you're buying an affordable house, you're going to have the dough to pay for the bonus room. So now you have houses that are distinguishable because some have it and some don't. I know that 40B probably much more of an expert than me on this, but, you know, they, they do endeavor to make them all look pretty much the same, uh, externally at least. So I guess I have a que, the question I really have is, is there possibility that someone buying an affordable house could build a bonus room at a discounted price?
The, um, I can, Peter can probably answer that better than I, but I can tell you that the, 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 the price for an affordable house is locked in at a certain price. And my, the, the indistinguishable feature, if you will, will be, uh, the same from the street on all the houses. Now, whether somebody wants to add a 10 by 10 room to the back, um, my understanding of the 40B rules, and we did check this before the hearing because we went through this with Noreen last week, is that, um, that meets the guidelines for acceptable 40B. To add 100 square feet to the back of the house, as long as everything else is the same. I mean, there isn't a rule that says that, but that's, that's kind of how we interpret the rules relates to our plan.
Yeah. So, so let me step in.
If I could interrupt for just a moment, Attorney Freeman, my apologies. Uh, by the board's own standing rules, uh, the board's business ends at 9:30. Uh, but we can extend that by vote of the board.
I'll move that we extend to 10 o'clock.
All right. And that's not only, that's not only for this hearing, this is for the board's total business for the night, and we do have other items on our agenda. So, uh, Ken made the motion to extend to 10 o'clock. Second and by Bob, we'll do a roll call vote of everyone again. Scott?
Scott, so it's guy.
Ken?
Ken Foreman.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Mary? Nope, you're muted, Mary. Sorry.
Barry Berry, I.
Thank you, Mary. James?
James Morrisey.
And TJ Hury, I. So the board's business has continued to 10 o'clock. Sorry, Attorney Freeman, go right ahead.
No problem. Thank you. So just briefly, um, as, as Brian said, and as to Mr. Foreman's question, no, we can't increase the price. Um, you know, it's set by the, uh, guidelines based on the formula for up to 80% AMI. Uh, in terms of the standards, you're absolutely right. And, you know, so it's a good question. But the indistinguishability is satisfied in two respects. It won't be seen from the street. But I think equally important, because it is a slight difference, if, if there are many bonus rooms that are selected by market owners, the kind of rule of thumb, which is not in any way a regulation, but the general guideline, and I don't even think it's written candidly. But I know from many projects that with all the subsidizing agencies, you know, if there's up to about a 20% variation in the size of, of an affordable unit versus the market, unless that's very extremely visible for some reason, um, then it's considered okay. So, you know, there are possibilities that they won't be exactly the same, but it does, it does fit within what the requirements are for 40B.
So where are, are these rooms placed? Are they, and you said they're in the rear?
Yeah, they're right in the back. They're off the dining room, um, in the back, if you will. I know we flew through the floor plans, but if you go to the, uh, base, the base cape plan, I think, um, you'll see on the plan, the, the floor plans, if you will, uh, you'll see the, um.
Can you put that plan back up?
Yeah, can you, Brandon, can you get that back up? There you go.
So, uh, on, for example, lot 23.
Yep.
Is that a base cape?
Lot 23 is. What do we have there?
So 23.
23 does, 23 does not have the option of having a, uh.
Okay. Tell, gi- give me the lot number of one that's of like a base cape.
Uh, 19, 18, 19, right here.
Right. Okay. So 18 is next to it, 20. I guess, you know, the, the only heartburn I have is they're all so close to each other that I can't believe they're not all visible to each other, but. Uh, is there any landscaping you're putting in between them?
Sure. There's landscaping between the houses. There's fences goes around the entire perimeter of the property. Um, you know, we've, you know, it, it, we're going to try to save as many trees that we can after we put the road in. It's tough to do it, but we're, you know, we've, we're committed to try to do the best we can. But there is landscaping between the houses.
And the separation between houses is, on average, is what?
Depends.
I actually, I looked at this yesterday. Um, the minimum distance is around 13 and a half feet. On average, it's between 15 and 20 feet. Um, I believe there was three houses that are closer than 15 feet. All the rest are greater than 15 feet apart from the closest house.
And none of the houses are closer than they were now than the prior design that we had. We were able to, we were able to make them wider, especially when it, when we struck to the ranches, we made dramatic improvement there. Unfortunately, it's only three lots, but every bit helps.
Okay. Well, that, like I said, that's my, was my only concern. Overall, I do believe you have improved it. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Bob, any questions? Everyone got rearranged again.
That's okay. So I know that you're working within the same footprint, but it seems that there's more bulk towards the rear of the, of the properties, towards the setback. So what's the, what's the difference of the space now that's, it's taken up at that back real setback line?
None.
From the previous plan?
No, no, no impact.
Well.
The setback is not.
Well, no, I guess my question is, on a lot of the, you know, the dotted overlays of what the new layout is, it does work within a footprint, but it seems it's been shifted. So there's more space into that area just before the setback that was open before. Is that correct?
Well, Brian, if you want to, I can, um, I think what, what, um, you're, you're talking about, so kind of past that rear wall of the main area of the house.
From before, yeah, from the original.
So, so the, the differences there are, are the, um, the bonus room actually gets a little bit smaller. It's two feet narrower. So it went from 10, it used to be 10 by 12, now it's 10 by 10. So that got a little bit narrower. But I think what you're talking about is there's a little area next to the bonus room that.
Looks like.
Because the garage. Yeah, basically what we want, what they wanted to do was the garage face, they wanted to set that back from the front face of the house a little bit. So that kind of kicked back that, you know, I think it's a 10 feet by four feet section that went into the backyard from the fr, basically, almost like cut that sliver of the house and slid it back a little bit, just to give a little relief of that garage door, um, to kind of break up the, the flat fronts of the houses. So that's, I think, the change that you're, you're talking about.
I, I will say though, that we had the, we had the, depending on how, when we got onto the site and the, and it laid out, we had the ability to build the houses within the setbacks. And so we tried to respect that. Now, some parts may have actually pushed back a little bit. But, you know, we did not infringe upon setbacks and for 22 of the houses, we removed sheds that were right up against the property line. So there was a little bit of give and take, sure, but.
Yeah, I, I only asked that question because when I remember being on this before, that, that the majority of the lots were less than 5,000 square feet. So you did work within the sep, that setbacks, but because the lots were so small, I think that's why you got more of an appearance of bulk because of the size of the lots. Um, I did ask when they were laid out previously regarding the landscaping, because you had some really great, um, slides of the backyards of what the landscaping was. But when I asked that question previously, um, I got the response that that landscaping would not exist. That was a suggestion of what somebody can do. So it appears tonight you are planning on doing some kind of, you know, buffering or landscaping area. Do we have any kind of updates on exactly what is planned to go in?
Whatever was, whatever was previously, um, agreed to and proposed, that's what we're doing. We're going to do that. We didn't change it.
Okay. So my question was, what was previously opposed, uh, proposed, what was submitted? Um, I was told that was more of a idea of what could be done, but it actually wouldn't exist. When I asked about the landscaping in back, it showed in the plan, the decking, the plantings, which I thought looked great. Um, I was told that was just there for the look of the aesthetics, but that actually would not be put in. So is that something that now is going to be put in?
I, I have to.
Can I, can I just, um, because I, I, I pulled up on the screen, uh, it's easy working at home. There is a plan on landscaping and I think, uh, recollecting that discussion, you know, I think it was meant to say, to be completely transparent, that those were, um, colored renderings or, you know, pictorial, uh, um, examples, but they weren't meant to be like spec, you know, like number specific and species specific. And I think we were being careful at that time to say that's not, you know, the exact detail of the plan. But there is in the, in the permit, I think it's condition number three, the landscaping and plantings for the development and the buffering and screening of the abutting properties. It'll be substantially shown on the conceptual site landscape plan, Little Pond Village, um, October 7th, 2017. Um, so. Um so, you know, that that was approved, and you know, it did call for the, you know, greater details on the landscaping.
No, I think it's great if it's actually there, the impression that I got at the time that that most of that would not be put in. It was a suggestion of what an owner could do if they wanted to do the backyard space, because again, you're dealing with backyard space that's so small. And there really is no open space in the development, that you're gonna be figuring that most of these people are gonna be spending their time in the back. Versus the front, so that's why I just wanted to see what it was, in in according to what you just said, so. Again, because the lots are so tight, you definitely will not, driving down the street or the other side, see. That some of these houses have any of those back rooms?
I I I think, the other thing that uh I think um Randy just reminded me, that uh they're, they're having fences between the lots. Which would also cut down as you drive past and look back.
Basically, the entire, if. That, we're not proposing any changes to that previously, um the entire backlog yards are fenced in, so. There would be a fence along the entire, you know, all three sides of the backyards, and I think with.
Oh, so they will be fences along the sidelines, then?
Yeah, yes, yes.
And among the individual property lines?
Yes, so there would be this, you know, basically, if you're looking at the house from the street, the fence would extend from the side of the house to the side lot lines. Along the side lot lines and then around uh along the rear. And I think um on the southern side of the road where we had direct to butters, that was a solid six-foot fence. And on the northern side, that rear fence. Um at least in portions was split rail, and that was something that was asked for by the Conservation Commission, so. Driving down the street, you wouldn't see into the backyard, they would be fully fenced.
And you you did mention that you did meet with some of the butters and you did have very good feedback, so. Um, how many butters do you have there and and how many of them did you actually meet with?
So we met, we we met with, um, as you know, we were appealed by by uh one of our butters at the rear of the property. And spent some time um uh addressing the appeal, and uh over the course of the time, we actually developed a nice relationship with them. And um so we we met with them and went through the plans with them, then we. We we went out and put and gave notices to all the butters and had a uh meeting that we um. Next to eight cousins in the gallery space there. Uh we tried to have a neighborhood meeting there, un- unfortunately with COVID. You know, we didn't get a a big turnout, but two of the butters, the immediate butters off Elmer Road did show up. And we spent some time with them, we showed them, we had, you know, we showed them all the details, went through it with them, and uh they liked the plants. I I can't speak for them, but I'll just tell you, that's, that's what they told us.
Yeah, thank you.
Mary, any questions?
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you, Mary, James, anything?
I I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary, go ahead.
I suppose I would ask the question, and I'm sure I could add them up, but how many butters are there?
Um director butters, there's one, uh two, three. And ten director butters.
On the north side.
The south side, and then there's the industrial, then that industrial use to the north along Worcester Court, but there's, there's ten residential. Still butters to the south side along Alma.
Thank you.
So we met with three of them. Personally.
James, any questions?
No questions.
Uh so the, I think one of the differences, it's a subtle difference, but one of them between the original. Uh application and tonight is the fences. Um, so I know you're proposing private ownership of all the properties. Uh whose responsibility are the fences? For the maintenance upkeep, things like that.
Yeah, they they would be on private property uh as opposed to any common area. Um so the answer is it would be the uh the homeowners, but there will be, you know, probably somewhat typical. Uh restrictive covenants for the ultimately the homeowner association and all the owners, and certainly it. Can give the uh the right to the uh HOA um to, you know, enforce maintenance and upkeep. Uh, you know, things like that, so that's how it would be dealt with.
All right, and I'll I'll just call it the the perimeter fence, the the one that borders the butters. Are are you making any distinction between that? And in, and the fences in between each house?
Um, I I don't think I uh intended a distinction, but Brian or or Randy, if you've thought about that, you can certainly, you know, respond.
Great, great. I don't recall a differential in the in the fence design, I know, I know it's a nice fence design, and I think talking with Doreen, Noreen. And we're gonna raise up the uh the base of the fence to meet uh. Some conservation concerns, but um.
Yeah, I, I remember this being discussed three years ago or two years ago, whatever it was now, and I. I'm I'm actually trying to flip through the the decision, I thought this was um addressed, and I thought that the. This is off the top of my head, from what I remember, um the rear fence behind your lot in the, you know, the. The fence parallel to that coming from the house would be uh maintained by those particular lot owners. And I thought the side fences were part of the HOA, because they, you know, they shared common. Uh but I thought it was spelled out either in the um. Decision or somewhere, I can't find it right now, but I thought it was spelled out somewhere.
So I may, I may be wrong, but didn't it have something to do with turtles?
We actually found some great turtles out there, we did our turtle sweep, yeah, we found some great turtles.
So, so basically, we had, um, we weren't in a natural um habitat, a mapped habitat, but we were adjacent to it. And um one of the butters brought up, um they had seen turtles out there, so we actually worked with Nat- Natural Heritage. Um, uh Dupree Engineering and LEC Environmental, who assisted us in the concom. Um to implement a turtle protection plan, so basi- you know, earlier this fall, we went out and. They put up a limit of work barriers, of basically, it's a turtle fence, did it a sweep inside that area, any turtles that are found inside that area relocated out. But the idea is that that fence is maintained to keep turtles out of the construction area.
All right. Any follow-up questions from the board?
Was there a mention?
Sorry, go ahead, Bob, Ed will get to you in just a sec.
Was was there a mention that you were looking to have this accepted as a town road, or am I confused with another?
You know, Noreen asked us that the other day, and we kind of misremembered, but this is gonna be a private road. Right, Brandon?
Yeah, it's noted in the um, the decision, the previous decision as being maintained privately, and we're not proposing any changes to that.
So the town will just do the trash collection, snow removal, but you'll maintain the road itself?
Correct.
Yeah, that's just part of the permit.
I'll tell you, as part of, you know, our intent is to control the the. The fencing, the landscaping, you know, throughout the develop, as long as we're already at developing the property. Through the HOA.
Ed, do you have a question?
Yeah, the uh the, are the sheds that are the six sheds that are shown on the drawings, are they all right up against the property line? It looks like they are in the drawing.
They are, it graphically at this scale, but they're three feet off the property line, and that's the same. Setback that we had previously when every lot had a shed, so it's um, they're three feet off the rear and side property lines.
We removed twenty-two of them, we removed twenty-two of them, and we kept the, the ones that we kept after an exact same spot as they were before.
The sheds are um eight by ten, correct, Brian?
Yes, eighty square feet.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you, Ed. Uh any other follow-up questions from the board at this time? All right, we will turn it to public comment, if you have a question, comment, or a concern out there regarding uh this project. Uh using the Zoom app, go ahead and click, uh raise your hand, and we can elevate you and get a question. Or comment or concern addressed for you. All right, well, it looks like we have one, if we could uh bring up Michelle Bernard, please. And Michelle, uh if you could just state your full name and address for the record with whatever question, comment, or concern you may have.
Here's Michelle on Chris Bernard, eighty-six Hudson Street. Um, two questions, one, are there pre-existing um work hours already set forth, I mean, I I heard it earlier mentioned, what are they? Or is there anything special related to the permit?
Yeah, in the um permit, it's, I believe it's seven to seven, Monday through Saturday. No Sundays, no holidays.
And what is the rough uh development timeline at this point, how many months, years?
Ryan, what were we thinking?
Well, we we are, we're thinking, you know, just, we just, as as we think about the project, we're thinking about a three-year project that we would be. Uh, three years, you know, nine houses a year, oh, you know, who knows, but that's our, that's our thought process.
Yeah, I think the intention would be to build the road, pull out in drainage first, so the kind of the heavy construction of the roadway and everything would be done. You know, in the first three to four months, and then after that, it would just be individual lot construction, correct, Ryan?
Correct, and as I mentioned, we will, we will um start in the back middle of the project and work our way to Worcester Court. And almost on the road will not be a construction uh roadway, that'll be for pedestrian access only. And we're ill-fated now on site documents uh for for site contractors, so we're, we're planning on putting the road in. Um, you know. You know, probably uh in, early in two thousand twenty-one.
So ninety, you're you're projecting at this point, obviously?
That's what we're projecting, you know, right now the market's good, but I've been in this movie before, you know, nine, you never, you never know. So, you know, that's one of the reasons we're trying to come up with what we think will give us the best chance for success and. Um, you know, markets are fickle, but but you know, we're thinking right now from a planning perspective, it's three years.
And what is the market rate for the non-affordable?
The what?
What what is the market rate for the homes?
It's a great question, it's a great question, you know, I mean, we've been, we've kind of underwritten the project to be. You know, six fifty to seven hundred thousand dollars is kind of, you know, what we've underwritten the project at.
Thank you. Construction costs have also gone up, you know, quite a bit over, you know, the last uh couple of years, et cetera.
Sure.
And I will say, these houses, uh with the houses we're proposing are a little bit more costly, I think, I think values have gone up a little bit, to be honest with you. So I I think we're gonna end up, I think, you know, they kind of offset a little bit, I think we're kind of in the same ballpark. It it's more about doing a better project.
Thank you.
All right, uh thank you, Mr. Bernard, is uh anyone out there have any other question, comment, or concern regarding this project tonight? Just go ahead and uh raise your hand using the zoom. All right, I'm not seeing any, uh any follow-up questions from the board. Okay, uh how would the board like to proceed with the project? I think I I for one, I think I need to. Review, review in detail, uh few more aspects of the project, I don't have any additional questions or anything like that. Uh, but at least I'd, I'd like to review everything before coming to a final decision.
Well, that makes sense, TJ, I, I, my feeling is, we approved this before. Uh, this is, if anything, it's an improvement. Um, obviously, you know, I'd love it if they had. Or less houses, but that's not gonna happen, so. I think we should move forward with it. But I I certainly, you know, it's reasonable to take some time and look at the plans, there are, there's a lot of detail there.
Right, right, and you know, to the applicant's credit, I know that they proposed multiple uh. Living units, uh that's something we were amenable uh at the first hearing. So I'm still on board for that, but I I just want to look everything over, just to, just to make sure that we have everything.
I would say one other thing, that these plans are way more complete than some other forty Bs we've been seeing.
We'll leave it at that. Any other comments from the board at this time?
So I I agree too, that we'll probably go to another hearing, but the uh the changes are more aesthetically pleasing that they've made, they seem to fit into the area well. Um, just some food for thought regarding these bonus rooms, I understand that the affordable units are locked in at what you could sell them for. I do worry the problem that the affordable units will not add bonus rooms, because they don't want to pay the difference for the bonus rooms. Um, when we originally gave the permit for this, when the garages weren't there, we did it on a basis, because. We were gonna actually go with less lots and less units on the property. So I'd like to think about actually including the bonus rooms on the affordable units. Um, and then giving them the options on the market rate units. I know that there is a bit of a cost issue there, but just because I have a real estate background and I know that area, that if the market stays as it is now. Um, six fifty right now is well under what those units can go for. The adjacent properties are going for six fifty in their older homes. So there shouldn't be a problem getting in that seven range, so. I would just like the affordable units, if they want a room, to get the room and have it included and not worry about the additional cost. Um, other than that, I think the project, you know, looks nice, it's a nice, it's a nice view.
I I will say that we reduce the bonus rooms by four in this new scheme versus what was there before. You do lose a fair amount of money on each house that you build on the affordable, and I think we've added the garage, and I I do think that. Base cape without the bonus room with a nice patio in the back is a, is a hell of a house, honestly. And um I would respectfully request that you don't put that burden, that you don't. Make, give that requirement to us, um. Like I said, I I know the market seems like it's never gonna end right now, but markets are fickle, and you know, this, this is um. It's, it's, anyway, so those are my comments, I appreciate, I I appreciate where you're coming from, you know.
And the board may also want to consider, because of the bonus rooms, we're always worried about how they're gonna be used as a later date by the current owners. Is some kind of covenant restriction, so they won't be used as bedroom space?
We'll put any covenant you want on it, on on this project, bedrooms, whatever you want, we'll do it.
We thought about that even before the other hearings tonight, so that would be fine.
You want to put a covenant on the upstairs space, we'll put, we want to build as we design them, if you want any covenants, we'll give them to you. This is what we want to do with this project.
We appreciate that, Mr. Keller.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Oh, uh just a thought on what Robert said, so. Six of the units, so the six units that just have sheds are, is any, any of those affordable?
One.
One. So, I have, you know, so some proportion of the market rates are not gonna have. They can all build bonus rooms, are those rooms?
No, 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 fi- five, five of the market rate units will not have bonus rooms. Actually, eight of the, eight of the market rate units will not have bonus rooms, and only one of the affordable units will not have a bonus room. Some houses will have them, some won't, one of the reasons we really like this design. Is as you drive down the street, it just gives you some great contrast, if you will, as the the house lines, and we can play with the. With the front of the house a little bit, you know.
So, so if I'm doing the math right, about sixty percent of the market rates can have bonus room. So if you did that, there's seven uh affordables. So.
Six of them would have.
Times seven.
If they want.
That gives you about four, four would have bonus rooms, if you were to keep somewhere between four and five.
You know, and you know, with a lot of people, you know, people may decide not to have a bonus room market rate.
I realize that, I realize.
I think a fair number of them won't, quite frankly, because they don't want the outside space with a nice patio.
I guess what you, what you, what we could say is something like up to so many, you know, would be entitled to a bonus. Clearly not fair to make you put all bonus rooms on all of them.
Yeah.
And if somebody chooses not to have a bonus room now, once we put in the decision, they could always add it at another time, so. We just have to figure that the bonus rooms could be there if they, if they wanted to appear or not.
Right, that's why we put them in, we put them in all the, so we, we, all the impacts, all the, you know, all the drainage, all the, everything is is calculated under the worst case. I'm guessing about half will have bonus rooms and half won't today, early on, and then, as you're right, over time, maybe people add them, but. I can tell you, I mean, I have a very house in a very similar. I can tell you, I mean, I have a very house in a very similar development up and pop and asset and we live outside all year. And we, you know, we run a small lot, we live out in the backyard and we, I'd rather, I'd rather have that than a bonus room, you know, you know, but that's me.
All right, just as a matter of housekeeping, once again, uh, we are at ten o'clock. We voted to extend the board's business to ten. I think we are looking at a continuation here. Noreen, what date do we have available?
So your January seventh meeting, you already have two forty Bs on. So I really would think that you would.
Yeah, so that's a no.
Yeah.
So you don't have to explain it.
I mean, what, not to put people off, but with the upcoming holidays, the date after that would be January twenty first.
So then I, I'd make a motion to continue to January twenty first, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Second. All right, motion to continue the hearing to January twenty first, twenty twenty one, made by Bob, second by Ken. We'll do a roll call vote. Ken?
And Forman I.
Ted?
Hey, Dan, Karen I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan I.
Uh, Scott?
Scott Slinski I.
And TJ Hari I. So the hearing is continued to uh, January twenty first, twenty twenty one. Attorney Freeman, thank you, do you and your team tonight? Sorry, we can't get you any closer, but uh, we're full, full steam ahead in this Zoom environment.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. We appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Thank you.
All right, uh, should we entertain a vote to continue the board's business or should we just rifle right through these?
Let's just rifle.
Rifle.
All right. Rifle right through.
Voting the minutes from November fifth and November nineteenth, we'll take them one at a time for November.
So just the fifth.
Just the fifth, tabling the nineteenth?
Yes, sir.
Has anyone had a chance to review November fifth?
Yeah, I made a, make a motion to accept it. I reviewed it today. So went over a couple of things with Noreen.
All right, so voting to approve as amended by Ed. Is there a second?
Second.
By uh Bob, roll call vote, Ken?
And Forman I.
Ed?
Ed, Ben, Karen I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan I.
Mary?
Mary, Barry I.
James?
James, Moore Side.
Scott?
Scott Slinski I.
And TJ Hari I. So we're tabling the nineteenth. Uh, board discussion real quick, uh, public comment for a little trial run tonight. I think it went well. Uh, I might adjust my comments on how to uh, police it, how to share it further, but uh, at least I I think it went well tonight, so.
So I'd like to compliment the chair for making that move tonight. Um, Mary Barry and I took part in the online training with Judy Barrett on forty Bs. And one of the comments that came out of there, uh, we didn't mention what town we were from. But on the multiple towns that she deals with, they all allow the meetings to be handled this way with Zoom webinar. And she's never had any issue with it. And I think the way it was handled tonight shows that it works. People get registered in advance and then they're elevated just like anyone else. And where other boards may not want to do this, they may be in a different situation. I think it's shown that it works and this is the better way to handle the meetings.
Fantastic.
So Bob, did you suggest that people would contact the board in advance that wanted to participate?
So she, so she suggested two things. She said some can just participate the night of, but when they identify that they want to speak, they identify who they are, full name and an address. They're elevated. If anything gets out of order, they just get de-elevated again. They do put in their notices, I think, that people can register in advance. So um, they could say, if I appear at the meeting, um, I would like to be elevated. Here's my name, here's my address, and here is the project that I want to speak on. Um, and it seems like this is common practice with other boards. And you know, I know we're short on time tonight, but there was a lot of really good information on that training that I think we could get information on. Um, she has very uh specific uh board procedures that she's worked out, that she can give people copies of. Um, she had a lot of.
Did they record that by any chance if it was held on Zoom? Bob, do you know?
She's gonna say, yeah, yeah.
Excellent.
We can have her send the um, the PowerPoint. And she gave her email address and anything that you need, she said, just send me an email. I mean, the state offers uh technical support on all forty Bs at no cost. They've done it for years. And every pro, every board that she works with takes advantage of that immediately. When the project gets applied, they call the state number and they assign someone. I mean, that was, that was a big help.
Excellent.
strongly suggested getting an architect on any forty B and every forty B.
Yep, she said, don't go forward without an architectural review, even if you think you don't need it. It's the one thing that always holds up with the state. Um, she also stressed that even though waivers are asked on a lot of projects, you definitely do not have to give the waiver. And if you look at a project and find a way the project can be adjusted, where they don't need the waiver, that if the applicant tries to appeal at a later date and the state sees there can be an adjustment to alleviate the waiver, in most cases, they go with the adjustment.
Okay, that's good to know.
And the test is whether it makes it uneconomic, right?
Yes, and they do have to. She stated that if uh, if statements are made that we, you know, looked at different layouts that we asked to be supplied with it. There was also suggestion that if the board is asking for specific information, you let the applicant know when you ask for the information, that if it isn't supplied, then the applicant um is forcing himself to be continued. Um, that gives you also, it gives you backup later on that you're continuing because the information isn't being provided. Um, I asked a question about um incomplete applications that come from the state. She says, if you start seeing things that are incomplete, you just tell the applicant to review it and complete what's missing or update it. You do not have to go into individual of, you know, which line, what's missing, what isn't. You just tell them it's not complete and you want them to review it and make any changes that either aren't filled out or that are corrected. And then we, and then submit those in.
And and Rob, didn't she also say that if they say whatever it is that we request or as the BA requests, if it makes it uneconomical, that you ask them to provide you with evidence that shows that it is. You don't have to to do that. They have, the the evidence has to be provided by.
And then once they provide the evidence, you look at it, if you think it needs a peer review, you go with it. If you understand and agree with what they submit, then you don't go with a peer review, but um, this si- the situations we have where we ask for information and it just isn't supplied and we don't know what to do, or we just keep you know, going on and on with these hearings. She said, that's not how they're usually held. When you ask for something, if it isn't submitted, you write down, because it's not submitted, you're forcing yourself to continue it. This is information that you need for the project. And you write that down in the minute, so that if it's ever appealed, they know that you've asked for this stuff continually. And it just isn't being sup- supplied. Um, there's not much you can do on some of the pro forma information, but you can also ask if they're giving if they're giving answers that there's a marketability problem and they're doing changes because of marketability. You can't really go over their program, but you can ask them, who is this uh supervising agency that reviewed this plan in advance? Because they're supposed to review the plan before you market. So you can have them submit that information. But yeah, there was tons of information. It was really, if she ever does the course again, it was two hours and it was all questions and answers. It was really good. And I think she hires herself out as um advisors to towns. I mean, if we ever had issues with the forty B, I I would have no qualms with asking her to be a representative on the town end.
You mean like a consultant?
Yeah, she consults all the time, I guess, with different towns and different boards. You know, she knows where you have leeway and where you don't. And it is unusual, I mean, it it sounds like it's unusual that projects don't have a negotiation between the town and the project, that there aren't give and takes on both ends. Um, and I think one of the pluses with that seems to be this, this tech support that you can get from the state. You know, applicants may feel a little different now that there's a state representative there looking at what's being submitted versus just the board. And again, it's free. It's, it's been there for years and she said, uh, I don't know, maybe half of the boards take advantage of it. And she said, it's, it's, it's something everyone should take advantage of. Um, and again, the architectural review is is something that she's, that she just makes, she makes mandatory in all the boards that she deals with. They have an architectural review.
Excellent.
They have two million dollars available for this. The reviews.
Sounds like it's underutilized. All right, anything else for board discussion? Board updates, anything?
Fire.
Yeah, future agenda items.
ours open.
It looks like it. All right. I think that does it for the night. Uh, we will meet next, uh, next Thursday, December tenth, here at Zoom Virtual Town Hall.